Good evening. And welcome to Tuesday, February the 5th, 2019, 7:00 PM, regular meeting of the City Council and Successive Agency. The meeting will now come to order. United Embarcation will be given by Pastor Rogelio Vasquini from the West Covina Hills Seventh-day Adventist Church, followed by the pleasure of the divisions by Councilman Castellanos. All rise, please.
I will go on.
Councilman Castellanos?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
(laughing).
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Yep.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, do you need a report on our closed session?
There is. There is one item. The City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to file litigation in one matter. When there is service of process, then we will inform the public of who that case is against.
Our city manager isn't here at this time, so we'll go ahead and move on. We're not going to wait for him. This isn't working. The mic. Okay, at this time, we're going to have our swearing-in of our new council member, Jessica C. Shoemaker. So would you like to go down front, please?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Michael Flowers will be swearing her in. Oh, before she does, before she does the swearing-in, I have two certificates that they'd like to present you. The first will be by Aldo J. Ramirez. Would you please come forward? He's staying right in the second. Why don't you let him give us certificates first? Okay? We'll do that first.
On behalf of the office of California State Senator Susan Rubio, it gives me great pleasure, great honor to be here on her behalf. We'd like to present this certificate of recognition to our newest council member here in the great city of West Covina. On behalf of the California State Senate, we certainly know that you're going to serve the West Covina residents very well, and we certainly look forward to our partnership moving forward with Senator Rubio. We know you're going to do a good job, and if there's anything we can ever do, feel free to call us. Congratulations.
Okay, now, we have one more certificate, and that's going to be from Cameron Griffin for the Senator Li Ling Chang.
Taylor Morris, Assemblymember of Blanca Rubio, actually. Not disappointed.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
Taylor Morris, Assemblymember of Blanca Rubio.
No worries.
Assemblymember Susan Rubio. A Blanca?
Blanca Rubio.
But they didn't give it to me, so go do it for Blanca. They didn't give me one. Sorry.
Councilmember, it's my honor to be here on behalf of Assemblymember Blanca Rubio and to present this certificate of recognition on behalf again for Assemblymember in recognition of your exemplary dedication to the well-being of the community and from our proud Assemblywoman and a grateful state. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, now we can do the swearing-in.
You want to have your family come up there with you, or how you want to do it? Who's going to hold your Bible for you?
Both Bibles.
Just going to hold the Bible. Somebody who needs it next to Michael can hold the Bible. Beau, are you coming up?
Left hand on, raise your right hand. Read after me. I state your name.
I, Jessica Shoemaker.
Do solemnest swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without much mental reservation. No, just kidding. Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
(applause).
I know, that's right. That's exactly what we just said. They were such nerds. (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Oh, I will back up one second. City Manager, did you have anything that you want to report?
There is no change in seat agenda.
Okay, now, we do have one presentation for the BKK presentation by Saint Poli. Would they like to come forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just, is it on? There we go. Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to the council for appointing me. I didn't get a chance at the last meeting. It ended with, interestingly, last time, and so I want to thank you for your trust in me and for appointing me. I also want to thank several people who came out in support of me, and the first one is former Assemblyman, current Director of Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, Ed Chavez, who I'm sure all of you know already. And then also in our impromptu photo op, thanks to Councilmember, well, Mayor Pro Tem Wu, was the Superintendent of West Covina Unified, Dr. Charles Hinman.[643.12][643.12](applause). Board President, Daniel Maneras.[647.79][647.79](applause). Board Member, Cami Polis, AKA, according to a certain newspaper, is Mom.[657.79][657.79](laughing). And then it was my pleasure to have my ceremonial swearing-in done by West Covina Unified Board Member, Michael Flowers.[670.62][670.62](applause). And then the kids in the picture are my nieces and nephews who have grown up with me in public life. My oldest nephew, who's, you know, about a half a foot taller than me now, was just six months old when I was elected to the first time to West Covina Unified School Board. So this is a new adventure for them also, and I look forward to working hard for the community. I will tell you flat out that there are many times that you may not agree with me. It's just the way this goes. I can guarantee you that my thought will always be, will this decision better our community? And I will always welcome input from the community and be an open ear to people in the community. With that said, refer to my first statement, which is, you're not always going to agree with me, and I'm not always going to agree with you, but I will always give a fair opportunity to listen to the community and keep that open mind. So let's get to work.[744.04][744.04](applause).
Thank you, Jessica. Councilwoman Jessica Shoemaker. Now, our first presentation we have is by the BKK represented by Saint Poli. Would they like to come down forward? Anybody here?
Yes. If we may, we got a request to have a presentation made by Ken Hui, who is the present CEO of Saint Poli Group. They have been in attendance at a couple of our community meetings where we've been talking about the BKK development in our community, and they wanted to have an opportunity to share with them their feedback that they received and have some discussion to the community about some of their thoughts about a potential development that they would like to see up there as well. So if we can, I'll turn over to Ken, who'd like to make a brief presentation.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, city manager, staffs, and valued residents of West Covina, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about our proposal for the BKK site on South Azusa Avenue. Let me address the big thing first. Many of you know the history of BKK. We recognize there are great concerns about what happens if anything is built there. After listening to members of the West Covina community, we have heard what you say about traffic, toxic substance, safety, and also public health. We also heard your concern about impact to the environment, especially the plants and animals, and your concerns about development in general. Your desire for improved public safety and greater amenities like hiking trails and open space for you and your children is not lost on us and did not fall on bad years. This understanding didn't happen overnight. We have attended several public meetings, we have done an extensive public survey, we have taken dozens of phone calls and read many letters. Let me be clear, all of your concern are documented, and we take them seriously. Let me tell you something about Saint Poli. My father founded the company as a construction firm in 1977. Today, our business extends into several other disciplines, including architecture and design, development, and real estate service and management. Saint Poli has established itself by being able to identify a remarkable opportunity such as this and turn it into something that has value for the community. One of the best examples is our development in hotel concern in Pasadena. And it was the historical building, and we preserved the historical building and made that become a trendy hotel. And today, all the community members in Pasadena, they really appreciate what we have done with them. That is our track record with the city of Pasadena. What we will eventually propose would take all of this into account. I will tell you this right now, there will be no horse training track at BKK, because I know there was a concern about horse training track, but again, I'm telling you now, we won't have that. If we go forward with anything at all on the site, Saint Poli will be working with state agencies that manage resources like endangered plants and animals, other federal and state agencies like EPA and DTFC that monitor toxic and hazardous waste at locations like this around the United States and California. Los Angeles County officials who understands BKK relationship to West Covina neighbors and can work with us to help ease their concern and connect BKK to the county's vast network of the trails. West Covina city officials and staff who can help us address your concern about traffic on Azusa Avenue, and most importantly, if we go forward, will be working with you, the residents of West Covina. I believe that if we do our best, nothing is impossible. You never give up. You work together. You jump over the obstacle, and you become another better person. We all want to strive for the best. We want to represent what it means to never want to give up. When I look around the rooms, I see many of you who are accomplished and represent your community as leaders by working together, by developing a shared consciousness defined by those things we have in common. We can all engage in teamwork and be seen together as rising above. Thank you again for this opportunity. Now, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, William Chu, who will give you a presentation of our proposed development plan. William, can you come?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, and citizens of West Covina. To echo what Mr. Hui has talked about, we've listened to the citizens in many, in several community hearings, and we've now come up with a concept of what we could, what we're proposing that we could develop on that site. And so again, I want to emphasize, it's a concept, so it's something that we will we're proposing. So this is the site, and there are many components to this proposal, and I'll break it down a little bit further, and you will see, and we can refer back to this as we go, and therefore you will see where, what we're talking about. I think the key thing is, this is Big League Dreams, so you can put things in, put perspective where, what we're talking about. And I think in the public hearing, most of you would remember, this part is what we call the Category Three site, and this portion here is a Category One toxic site, okay? So I just want to put things in perspective for people in the audience. So basically, we are breaking the program down into the following, the public park with potentially an open space amphitheater, horse hiking trails, habitat preservation and restoration, solar and greenhouse program, zip line and aerial adventure park, future virtual reality park, canine training facilities, a fire department training facility, a 400-room hotel with 20,000 square feet of meeting space, and a glamping campsite. And I will go through each of these in a little bit more detail for all of you. So let's start with the public needs on the top of the flat top on the Category Three area. So this is the one in the middle, the flat top. And we're proposing, you know, flexible trail that connects to the Gailster Park, open theater, amphitheater on the right, and basically open space. And this is what we have learned from the public hearings, that they want public access, public space, open space, and walking trails. So there will be trails designed to connect to Gailster Park and also to the Shabarm Trail to the east. So this will be some of the trails that will be connecting the site to the north with the Gailster Park and to Shabarm Trail to the right. So these are the trails. Next, you know, so these are just some graphic images of what those trails would look like. And again, it's open to the public input as to what they would like to see in those open space and trails. I know we talk about preservation of and restoration of habitat. We have the coastal sage, and we are fully aware of it, and we have engaged a biologist to actually map the entire site as we speak, and with that report that would come out probably in the next few months, then we'll know how to work around the areas to make sure the coastal sage and the local animals will be protected. So next is talk about, this was actually in the last two public hearing, people were talking about solar energy on site. So this is what we're proposing to do. Please ignore the two on the right, because that is the Category One. We are not going to touch any of that area for a very, very long time. So please ignore that. What we'll focus on is a little to the left, look like a handshake there, and that's where we will be designing the solar energy that will be to the benefit, for the benefit of the citizens of West Covina, the residents of West Covina. So this again is just a concept. By no means this is what it will look like, and it will be tastefully done and tastefully designed and installed, but this is just an example of what it could look like. And next is to complement the Big League Dreams is some adventure programs that will be in that area that we're seeing here, next to the solar area, and most likely it will be above it, and it will be something like this, a zip line, you know, so it becomes a destination for visitors and also residents of West Covina, and also to complement the activities at the Big League Dreams. And then also the VR park, I know I heard some concern about what a VR park is, is really just a building. It's not Disneyland. It will not be accomplishing, or accounting for acres and acres of land with games, with all this. It really is just a building. A VR is really wearing a goggle and have the virtual reality feel, so it will be like this. It's inside a building, so it will be just a big nicely designed warehouse that inside you have the different experiences wearing a VR goggle. And then following that will be the canine public safety training facilities that will include a canine training center and also a fire department training center. Why is it located there? Because there is another row that goes through there that would be ingress and egress for emergency vehicles, so that would be most appropriate in terms of location of these training facilities. So that's, you know, again, just images of what those centers will look like for training canine and the fire department trainings. And hotel, this is where we envision this will be where the hotel will be built. Again, currently it's a concept. It will be 400 rooms with 20,000 square feet of meeting space. Again, it's just a concept, and we'll be working through many designs to make sure that, but I can assure you that the design will be low-rise. It will not be a 20-story hotel building. It will be spread out among many low-rise buildings like a resort, so that it will not be imposing, and also we, it will be designed to work within the nature of how the rest of the development will look like. It will be designed with that in mind. So these are just, again, concepts, imagery of what potentially it will look like, but, you know, again, is low-rise, is more resort style, and that's all we have now. We don't really have gone into more details, but I want to emphasize that with 400 rooms, our hotel with 130 rooms, soon become 161 rooms in the city of Pasadena, we contribute a little over $1 million of hotel room tax to the city of Pasadena. So with a 400-room, which is about three times the size, we expect that the contribution in hotel tax revenue should be somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million to the general fund in the city of West Covina, not including any other sales tax or anything, just a hotel room tax. And lastly is the glamping, basically is a glamorous campaign grand, which is a new style of outdoor activities, and this is what it looks like, and we're going to try to again, give the outdoor nature experience to people who want to enjoy the outdoor. And so that's our presentation to what we think we would want to build on the former BKK site, and thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I see we don't have any adjournment motion unless any of my council, fellow councilmembers have any that they'd like to have adjourned in. Seeing none? Okay, at this time, it's, we shall open up for oral communication. We will now move forward with the oral communication. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to complete a yellow speaker card, which is located at the main entrance of the chambers, and please fill it out, put your name and your city that you live in. You don't have to put your exact address on it, but the city that you live in, and please give it to our assistant city clerk. And if you don't want to speak, we do have an orange card that you can fill out and turn it in, and you don't only have to be here to speak, but turning that card in doesn't exclude you from speaking your time if you want to. So at this time, our assistant, please call the first speaker up.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, we have one agenda position slip provided by Robert Gomez, resident of West Covina. He wanted to note his opposition to Item 6 on the agenda. Moving forward, I'm going to call Vicky Shaliga up to the podium. Next would be Robert Cruz, followed by Chris Yohi.
Yeah, you all should have one. I put five out here. It's that time of year again. I wasn't going to do this this year. I'm not really the one that signed off on all of this, but I am following through because I know it's one of the biggest events in West Covina, if not the biggest event, because we have so many people that attend this. We're asking for cosponsorship by the city. As you can see, we already made this out with. As you can see, we already made this out with your logo on here, and I hope you will co-sponsor with us. We're excited. We have some new people coming in, new restaurants, hopefully. I've already talked to Porto's, and they said they're going to do this if we can get their place built. If not, I don't see why they can't bring all this stuff out from Buena Park. I mean, they do it for us on Saturdays. They're one of the big restaurants that we're hoping will be at our event. We're asking for a little bit of help with our permits. I don't know if we can do that this year or not. I know the city is struggling a little bit, but we're hoping you guys can help us out. And everybody come, have a good time, eat at the 17 restaurants, have a little bit of juice at the beer and wine garden, or beer and champagne garden. And we've already got some big-name items in the silent auction, so hopefully you can attend this, show your support, and help us out. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council staff, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. My name is Bob Cruz. I'm the public affairs manager for the Southern California Gas Company for West Covina. As I'm sure you know, Southern California Gas distributes natural gas to the residents of West Covina, allowing your residents to heat their homes, cook their meals, and dry clothes economically and safely, with a reliable source of energy which is abundant and produced domestically. Also, employers in your city rely on natural gas. I know Porto does, and we welcome them to your city, to cook their meals at restaurants, pump water, and utilize gas in other industrial applications. But I'm here tonight to raise your awareness of an ongoing issue in California, which about many people are unaware. California wants to upset this balanced energy portfolio, which the residents of your city currently enjoy. California wants to electrify everything. A recent proposal, Assembly Bill 3232, which did not pass the legislature this year, would have required all new buildings built after 2022 to be all-electric, and would have required existing buildings to be retrofitted to be all-electric by 2030. While this proposal did not pass, you can assume that there will be future proposals. And this is why I'm here tonight to talk to you about. Think about how much you pay for electricity to cool your home in the summer, and how relatively little you pay for natural gas to heat your home in the winter. Right now, because of the coal spill, we're probably using a lot of natural gas. I know in my home we are, but still it's the lowest bill amongst electric and water. Imagine paying those high electric bills year-round because you are mandated to heat and cook with electricity instead of natural gas. Imagine me mandated. Let me be clear, SoCal Gas does not oppose electrification. If you want to use only electric appliances in your home or drive an electric vehicle, that's your choice. The fact is virtually every home in West Covina already has electricity and natural gas. This is the energy balance I've been talking about. Californians enjoy this balance. They want this balance and expect this balance to continue. I'm alerting you that this balance is threatened, and with it, the economic stability of families and businesses could be threatened by forcing homeowners to replace their natural gas appliances. Let me give you a small, quick overview of what that might cost. It is estimated it will cost an average of $7,200 to retrofit your home to basically take in electric appliances, and that doesn't even include the cost of purchasing new electric appliances. The cost of electricity in terms of your bills would go up about $388 per year more than natural gas, based on today's rates. There is an alternative, however. Biogas, a renewable natural gas, is a natural gas which comes from organic sources, such as dairies, wastewater treatment plants, and food waste. We can capture some of this methane, which now goes into the atmosphere, and then clean it and inject it into our pipelines. This is currently happening in our compressed natural gas fueling stations, and there's a wastewater treatment plant in Riverside, CRNR, which is capturing the methane and using it to basically power their plant. So the technology is current and available. If just 16% of the gas we deliver to customers comes from renewable sources, it would have the same effect on greenhouse gas emissions as electrifying all of California and at a much lower cost to all. This is a realistic goal to achieve by 2030. Again, if only 16% of the gas we deliver to our customer were to come from renewable sources, like I just mentioned, it would have the same effect to eliminate gas house emissions by 2030. With a balanced energy approach, we can achieve goals, preserve choice, and minimize disruption of service, and minimize increased energy costs. Thank you very much for your time and your attention. I will tell you that I will be sharing with the city manager a five-point slide presentation that he can share with the council and staff. I'm also going to be including a resolution entitled Maintaining Local Control of Energy Solutions, something for your future consideration. And again, I will talk to the city manager in terms of possibly getting on a future agenda. So thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
After the next speaker, I'd like to call up Chris Miller, Colleen Rosati, and Jim Gravici.
I want to say congratulations to you. Hello, my name is Christopher Yohi. I am a citizen of West Covina for about 20 years. This is your first, this is my first. I've never spoken in front of a council before. Mr. Mayor, hi, how are you? I just came in support of the Sing Pauli organization. I've lived in Covina for 20 years, and I've been in the hospitality industry all my life. And unfortunately, I have to travel, I've had to travel out of West Covina to work. I've worked in Hollywood at the Magic Castle, where I could actually make a living to afford to live here. It's a beautiful place to live. And then down in Malibu also as well. So when I heard that they were planning a hotel in a place where people like me actually work, right around the corner from where I live, I was really enthusiastic about it. So I know that oftentimes you hear the negative reasons why maybe you shouldn't take an opportunity to expand and build, but I wanted to let you know there are plenty of people like me out there that are enthusiastic about this project. And like I said, I have a young son, and, you know, it's nice to know that there's a possibility for actual, actually, good jobs where we can afford to pay our rent. So I just want to say thank you. And again, congratulations to you, and I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you very much.
Chris Miller, first, before I start on the agenda items, I'd like to second what the gentleman from the gas company said. Being in the building industry as a mechanical engineer, it's always good to not monopolize on one power source. There are very sustainable, efficient ways of reusing energy through heat pumps and other things to reduce the amount of electric and gas use. So I think we should push for a balanced energy portfolio in the state of California. On item number one, lawsuits. Can we as a city do anything right? Seems like every council meeting, there's a new lawsuit. Item six, or sorry, item seven and 16, we still have not had a budget-to-actual report or a overtime report to date. It was promised to us to have monthly reports back in August. We haven't seen any of that. Item 11, I was disappointed when the approval of the amount that can be purchased on a credit card without any kind of oversight or approval was increased. You know, with everything going on in this city, and, you know, who knows where all our funds are going, maybe we need to take a closer look at that. And then finally, item 12, how can we be Tree City USA when all our trees are dying? If you take a drive down Vincent Avenue or Sunset or various places, we're losing a lot of trees. You know, drought is one thing, but let's manage our trees. I mean, they've been around for years, and they're just basically dying off and drastically altering the look of the city. You know, next spring, are we going to have a bunch of purple flowers coming out, or is it going to be seeing dead trees lining the street? Thank you.
I'm Jim, I'm Jim Gravich, chairman of your audit committee. And I'm here to support the motion that's on the agenda this evening, item number 16. This year, I'm kind of distressed to report that even though I'm chair of a committee, the committee has not met at all. The committee's job is to keep the council informed of the financial health of the city, and we have nothing to report. There have been no financial statements, as was just said. There's no financial statement for the end of last year. It's now February, and we have no report from last fiscal year. To me, that is totally unacceptable. And I've got up about a month ago and essentially made the same speech, but since nothing's happened since then, I felt compelled to bring some more material, so that's why I had a piece of paper put in front of you. I'm not intending on reading any of it. It's the law. There is a government code that requires that each year a city have an annual independent audit conducted, and that audit needs to be completed, and the information from that audit filed with the state of California by the month of January. It is now February, nothing, it has not happened. And for that reason, because of government code 53891, I would ask Mr. Wu to amend his motion that's on the agenda to require that the city complete its audit and file it by the month of January, rather than the month, it was worded in the motion to be the month of March, because that is what is required by the state. But I'm much more concerned specifically about the fact that there are no financials in this city. As you know, the city has had a history of spending more money than it has taken in in revenue. It has had a history of spend, which is called an overdraft, and it has had a history of spending more money, I'm sorry, the first, spending more money than you're taking in is called a deficit, and spending more money than you budget, which this city has also had a history of, is called an overdraft. It's doing both things wrong, and the fact that there are no financials now means that you have no idea what kind of trouble you're in. There's a couple of items on the agenda to spend money that wasn't budgeted, but there's no idea what that means in terms of the context of the whole budget. You should know that as the council. You should know what's going on. You should know if there's another source of money to pay for these obligations, instead of just taking it out of your reserves. Since you have no information, you have no idea what's going on. The other part of this is that there is a formal law that says that you're required to post this information on the city website by the month of January. That has not been done, so you're out of compliance. That's government code 53893. And I'm not just talking about, you know, some little financial thing. As I've said in previous discussions to the old council, and since there's new people, I'll repeat this one little piece of information. Because of the pattern of spending more money that has been taken in, the city's on the road to basically bankruptcy. And without financials, you are in no position as the city council to do anything about it. So I'm asking your support for the item that's on the agenda today, because you have an audit committee, and it is their job to examine this stuff and to report to you what's going on. And the committee needs to meet, and we need to get that information so we can file our reports. Thank you.
Next speaker, Marcia Solario, followed by Colleen Rosati. Marcia Solario.
If I do better this time with the microphone. Good evening, mayor, city council, city staff and residents. I have two points tonight. So first, I come as a resident of West Covina to talk about item number seven, the budget amendment. I received quite a few phone calls, distressed phone calls, as to why the budget amendment included vehicle losses that were considered uninsured losses. So I was hoping during that item, maybe city staff could clarify that, and so talk about how does the city's self-insured policy come into play, if at all, and maybe that would help clarify why the general fund is paying for this and not insurance proceeds. And second, I'm here tonight as the co-chair of the audit committee, and two points for that. First, I want to just second everything that was just said by our chair, Mr. Jim Gravich. And in addition to Mayor Pro Tem Wu's recommendation that we'd be allowed to meet more often, I plead to the council and city staff to explore expanding the audit committee's responsibilities. The audit committee serves as an independent oversight, a committee made up of members with fiscal backgrounds, including currently two auditors. The committee has more than enough skill and capabilities to assist the city during this time of financial duress. During my research for tonight on audit committees in other cities, for the most part, if they are lucky even to have a committee, it is common for it to be a combination finance/audit committee. Review of their agendas showed that aside of reviewing and accepting the city's annual independent financial audit, their responsibilities include reviewing budgets and proposed budget amendments, review of internal controls, just to name a few. And lastly, the GFOA states, by effectively carrying out its functions and responsibilities, an audit committee helps to ensure that management properly develops and adheres to a sound system of internal controls, that procedures are in place to objectively assess management practices, and that the independent auditors, through their own review, objectively assess the government's financial reporting practices. Therefore, all we ask is for an opportunity to better serve our city. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. I'm Colleen Rosati, the elected city treasurer, and I have three points that I'd like to speak briefly tonight on. First, November election of 2018, city's investment account with Chandler Asset Management, general fund balance reserve policy. Excuse me. At the city council meeting on December 4th, newly-elected and re-elected candidates were sworn in. I want to apologize to my voters, my family, and my friends who came out and campaigned for me. I neglected to take a moment that evening to thank you all, and I sincerely appreciate it. In addition, your support to Measure T in keeping this position, the city treasurer as an elected versus appointed by the city manager, it was overwhelmingly a victory. And in my opinion, the results spoke loudly and clear that voters want to keep an elected city treasurer. So thank you. Regarding agenda item number two, Chandler Asset Management Investment Report, one of the city's treasurer duties are to make sure that the city investment portfolio maintains three components: safety, liquidity, and yield. Safety meaning that the investments have a high rate, rating showing profitability in the past. Liquidity, funds can be obtained easily when needed without penalty or loss of revenue. And yield, making sure we get the highest rate of return possible. At least once a month, I review the current investment portfolio. And about a year ago, I brought some of my concerns to the council regarding the direction these investments were going. And I mentioned that if we are paying more to the management firm in fees than we were getting in return, we needed to rethink our approach to investing. In addition, I noticed withdrawals were being made on what seemed to be a monthly basis at the time. I was concerned with these funds, and I brought it forward because these funds were earmarked, to the best of my knowledge, for a rainy day. In fact, right after I mentioned the concerns, the investment report was no longer pulled from the consent calendar, so I've been unable to give information to all of you. from the consent calendar, so I've been unable to give information to all of you. At least month -- once a month, excuse me, at least once a month, I review the investment portfolio as it comes up from Chandler Investment. Over the past month, I've seen a substantial decline in the investment portfolio. I felt it important tonight to share and update the community on where the city's current investment portfolio stands. The original investment amount less in late summer of 2016 was about $35 million. I apologize. The current report I recently reviewed was for the month of November, ending the 30th, 2018. The report reflects the current investment portfolio to have a book value of $23,785,000. Book value refers to if investments stay on the book to their term and maturity, the amount shown is what we can expect to receive. The term market value is what these investments are worth. If liquidated before the maturity date, as an example, there could be a large loss. Currently, as I mentioned, we have $23,785,000 as a market value. If for some reason, we go ahead and pull all those funds out to supplement some of our debts, there's a possibility that we could take a loss of a half a million dollars. Since the initial investment of $35 million in the summer of 2016, the city has pulled from this investment account, starting in Jan -- I'm sorry, in September of 2017, $1.2 million; $950,000 in October of 2017; $610,000 November of 2017; $2,500,000 in November of 2017; $1.1 million in July of 2018; $690,000 in August of 2018; $3.3 million in September of 2018; $1.3 million in October of 2018; $450,000 in November of 2018; $200,000 at the end of November of 2018; $1.1 million in December on the 3rd, and $375,000 on December 4th, totaling $13,425,000. While making early withdrawals before the maturity date were showing a loss of revenue of about $31,000. While this may not be a large amount, over time, if we continue to pull money from our reserve, our investment account, we're going to see larger losses. We've paid Chandler Investment Firm $41,000 for administration fees.
How much more time do you need?
Sorry.
How much more time do you need to finish this?
Um, sorry, I have a cold, so I'm sorry if I'm not coming across. I just have a few more things.
Okay, less than a minute.
Do you want me to continue, Lee?
Yeah, 45 more seconds, you got it.
Okay, we'll talk fast. My point is, looking at the additional withdrawals made after November 30th, the city will have an estimated book value of $22 million from the original $35 million in investment portfolios. I did ask as to what the funds were withdrawn for, and I was told that they were provided cash flow for various city disbursements, as well as a couple prepayments to CalPERS. I'm told that the prepayments to CalPERS, which have been about $6 million, and I don't have that confirmed, over the last two years, we did see a repayment savings, an early prepayment savings. The reason why I bring this to your attention is simple. Any profitability that we hope to have gained by creating this investment portfolio may be reduced or diminished by early withdrawals and administration fees. I have a couple of -- the other thing, can I talk about the other thing real quick? Sorry. Which brings me to the third point, which is the general fund balance reserve policy, item number 13 on the agenda. This will be discussed, I'm sure, at length by the Finance Director. A couple of points I would like to mention are the guidelines set by the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA. They recommend that the unsigned fund balance be at least 17% of the general fund operating expenditures. By having 17% reserve-level funds put aside, this means that we should meet the minimum of no less than two months of general fund operating expenditures. My concern is this: With reducing the percentage of the general fund balance reserve to 10 or less, the city runs the risk of possibly not covering daily operating expenses, such as payroll, as an example. Not to mention the unforeseen expenses that do arise, such as lawsuits, infrastructure repairs, et cetera, which we have already seen happen. By reducing the percentage, it may put the city in jeopardy, if not the funds to be covered, the unexpected expenses. In my opinion, we should keep the general fund balance reserve at its standard of 17%, recommended by the GFOA, and not risk not having necessary reserve on hand. Thank you. Thanks for giving me the extra time.[915.11][915.11](APPLAUSE)
We have no more speaker cards at this time?
Okay, since that was our last speaker, at this time, we usually go into the consent calendar, but I'm not going to make a deviation from that tonight. Since we had speakers here, we have one. Oh, I'm sorry, you have any comments you'd like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, at this point, you ask me to respond to some of the speakers. Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, since we have this item as an agenda item, it may be more appropriate to wait and discuss it. Two and three. No.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, why don't we wait if they have any concerns about anything that's on the agenda? Let's do it when that time comes up on the agenda, okay? Like I said, thank you. I am not going to deviate, since we have quite a few people here that want to talk about item number nine. So I think, and so to help some of the residents that can't stay out late, Don, that you might be able to go home. No, no. So what we're going to do, I'm going to open up our public hearing at this time. So item number nine is a public hearing. And then after the public hearing's over, we'll go back to our consent calendar, okay? So at this time, the matter except for public hearings consists of the amendment to Chapter 26, the West Covina Municipal Code related to accessory dwelling units. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notice as being given?
Verified.
Also, I would like to ask, have you received any written letters for or against, and how many it is?
Yes, Mayor, we have. We have received 76 total, all in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Now, at this time, I shall open the public hearing on Code Amendment Number 18-02. There will first be a presentation of the staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, and then those opposed. Mr. Freeland, who shall give the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll have Jeff Anderson provide that report.
Okay, thank you. This is Code Amendment Number 1802. It's for accessory dwelling unit revisions. The previous Code Amendment on accessory dwelling units was called 1703, and was adopted by city council on June 5th, 2018, and it addressed several issues. Two Code Amendments were completed recently to address the various bills passed over the last couple of years for ADUs, so it has been a common topic before the council for the last two or three years. The city council initiated a Code Amendment Number 1802 on June 19th, 2018, to consider accessory dwelling units, which I'll call ADUs, standards for minimum lot size and rear setback. The Planning Commission held study sessions on August 28th and September 11th, and a public hearing on October 9th, 2018. City council held a public hearing on November 20th, 2018, at which time the council voted to approve Planning Commission's recommendation. At the second reading of the ordinance on December 18th, 2018, this council asked staff to revise the proposed ordinance. So on the screen is the direction given by council at that time. One, remove the required minimum lot size. Two, revise the rear setback to be consistent with other additions for single-family houses, which generally allows a five-foot setback. And then three, establish a maximum floor area size for attached ADUs, the lesser of 50% of the size of the main house, or 1,200 square feet, and for detached ADUs, it would be 1,200 square feet. So I'm going to backtrack a minute to go through where we came from. So the issues discussed during the Code Amendment process, when I mean the Code Amendment process, I mean the one started in June, not what started in December. There were three parts that were discussed by the Planning Commission, their study sessions. One was a minimum lot size, one was a rear yard setback, and one was location standards for ADUs. And the last one hasn't really been a topic of discussion. It seems like it's been pretty well understood and accepted. First, we're going to talk about minimum lot size. Code Amendment 1703 revised the standard, that was the one that was approved earlier or middle of last year, revised the standard for minimum lot size, reducing it from a sliding scale of 12,000 to 46,000 square feet, depending on the location in the city, to 12,000 square feet throughout the city. Utilizing GIS software, staff was able to estimate the number of residential properties in the city and categorize them by size. So that's the chart you see, with lots greater than 7,000 representing 79% of the single-family lots in the city, up to lots greater than 12,000 representing 25% of the single-family lots in the city. Code Amendment Number 1703 established a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, so that it was estimated that 25% of the residential properties are eligible to construct an entirely new ADU that is not within an existing structure. Staff did not research lot sizes smaller than 7,000 square feet, as they comprise a very small percent of the housing stock. Just keep in mind, if an ADU is proposed to be constructed in a single-family residential zone entirely within an existing structure, then a new ADU can be approved, notwithstanding minimum lot size. So that means if you're converting an existing structure, you're converting part of your house into an ADU, you're not required to comply with the minimum lot size. The proposed ordinance has been prepared to eliminate minimum lot size standards. So that was the direction given us on December 18th, so the ordinance before you tonight would eliminate minimum lot size standards. So the second topic we discussed was rear setback. The R1 Zone requires a rear setback of 25 feet, except in Area District 1A, where a 15-foot rear setback is required. The code allows for an encroachment into the rear yard of 40%, no greater than 15 feet in height, and no closer than five feet from the rear property line. So there are standards, it's not just a five-foot. There are other standards that have come into play for that. Structures such as single-family houses, additions, and most accessory buildings, like garages, workshops, sheds, poolhouses, can be constructed to comply with these standards. Historically, second units have required a 25-foot rear setback. In addition, accessory habitable quarters, which we used to call guest houses, are also required to comply with a 25-foot rear setback. The intent of this standard is to reduce privacy impacts to the neighboring properties that are adjacent to the rear yard. Most of the types of improvements allowed to encroach in the rear setback are non-habitable buildings, which generally do not have the same loss of privacy issues on an adjacent property. The current standards for accessory dwelling units require a 25-foot setback. Options considered during the discussions of Planning Commission and city council included making no changes, in other words, keeping the 25-foot setback, changing the setback to five feet, as we're discussing here, and changing the setback to 15 feet. The proposed ordinance has been prepared to require the same setback that is for ADUs as for other single-family house additions, as directed at the December 18th meeting. It should be noted that for privacy reasons, the current code standards do not allow windows on side elevations that are closer than 10 feet to the side property line. Since 10-foot is the distance currently in the code for side yards, the proposed ordinance has been drafted to also prohibit windows on rear elevations closer than 10 feet to the rear property line. So this is location standards, which has been the issue that really hasn't had that much discussion. The current standards combine the allowed location standards for attached and detached ADUs in the rear yard section of the code. The location standards require the detached ADUs be located behind the back of the residence, while attached ADUs can be located anywhere in the structure. To clarify, staff is recommending separating the rear yard standards and the location standards into two sections in the code, so there's no confusion about which is which. In addition, staff is recommending, including language, that the door to the ADU not be located on the front elevation unless there is no alternative due to topography. There was no discussion on that at the December 18th meeting, but I wanted to clarify that that is still part of the discussion, going back as part of this Code Amendment to the middle of last year. Maximum floor area. The allowed size of accessory units in the current currently is 800 square feet, which was changed from 640 square feet in April 2017. At that time, it was noted that state documents referred to units ranging from 800 to 1,200 square feet. And the document, just so you understand where that is, it can be found at the website that you see on the screen there, it's in the staff report, and I quoted a little bit of it here, this is a quote from a state document. "Yes, the local government may establish minimum and maximum unit sizes," and gives a government code. "However, like all development standards, unit sizes should not burden the development of ADUs. For example, setting a minimum unit size that substantially increases costs, or a maximum unit size that unreasonably restricts opportunities would be inconsistent with the intent of the statute. Typically, maximum unit sizes range from 800 square feet to 1,200 square feet. Minimum unit sizes, minimum unit size must at least allow for an efficiency unit, as defined in the Health and Safety Code." So that, again, that is a quote from a state document that's still on the HCD, the state website. So state law allows cities to restrict the size of attached ADUs to 50% of the existing house size up to 1,200 square feet. The local government can select the maximum size of ADU allowed. So I want to cover that one more time, because it may be a little confusing. Keep in mind, there are different standards for attached ADUs and detached ADUs. So an attached ADU, which would be an ADU that is part of an existing building, can be restricted up to 50% of the house size, or up to a maximum 1,200 square feet, whichever one of those is less. Based on the discussion by the city council on December 18th, 2018, the ordinance has been drafted to allow attached ADUs up to the lesser of 50% of the square footage of the primary dwelling, or 1,200 square feet, and detached ADUs up to 1,200 square feet. It should be noted that the existing code standards also limits the number of bedrooms to two in an ADU, so that's what the existing code says. We didn't change that, there wasn't any discussion on that, we didn't want to take any liberties with that. So that it would still apply, even if the 1,200-square-foot maximum floor area was Accessory habitable structures, and this is what we used to call guest houses. Historically, the city of West Covina has had very restrictive standards for second units, now we call those ADUs, and very liberal standards for guest houses now called accessory habitable quarters. That situation changed in 2015, when the city adopted the standards to comply with state law for ADUs. Prior to that time, a second unit required the approval of a conditional use permit, which is a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and a guest house was allowed by right. In 2014 and 2015, Code Amendments were adopted that begin requiring an administrative use permit, which requires noticing of neighbors, for guest houses, and an ADU became an allowed use with no notification. So basically, they switched. One was, before, it was very difficult to get a second unit, and it was very easy to have a guest house. Now, it's very easy to get a second unit, and it's very difficult to get what we'd call a guest house. Generally, in the past, ADUs were reserved for comparatively large lots, while anyone could build a guest house. If the city council determines to allow all lots in the city to have an ADU, it may be appropriate to delete accessory habitable quarters standards from the code, as it's much easier to build an ADU. There's no discretionary review, no garage required, reduced rear setback. If the council determines to adopt the proposed ordinance, staff would recommend initiating a Code Amendment to consider eliminating the accessory habitable quarters standards. And just to give you an idea of what's, we've had, in the last two years, I believe, there have been one AHQ proposed, while I think we've had probably 16 to 18 second units So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 9th, 2018. The commission heard testimony from three individuals, all with concerns about expanding where ADUs are allowed. The commission noted that recent changes have been driven by state law, and about the need to consider how regulations affect the city as a whole. At the conclusion of the hearing, the commission voted 5-0 to retain the minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, retain the required 25-foot rear setback, and clarify location standards of ADUs within a building. So that was Planning Commission's recommendation. As I discussed, the city council then had that same hearing, had a hearing in November, and also recommended, or approved that, and the second reading is what came back to you in December. So in conclusion, the Code Amendment is exempt from CEQA per the sections on the overhead. No fiscal impact is expected. A draft ordinance has been prepared, eliminating the minimum lot size, revising the rear setback to the same as for other structures, and increasing the maximum floor area to 1,200 square feet. And that concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, I do have a couple of questions. First of all, if this were to pass on this, go with the state standards, what kind of control would the city have over ADUs?
Well...
What I'm asking is, could anybody build them, any place on their property, right up to the five-foot on their walls? Because you have a five-foot setback, five-foot on one side and five-foot on the other side, so you can really affect two neighbors by having a building built that close. Is that true?
That would be the case. If we, if the standards were adopted, as in the ordinance tonight, then you would be able to build to the maximum setback, which is many parts of the city's five feet on the side, some places it's seven or 10, but, and you could build as close as five feet to the rear setback, or the rear property line, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
My question would be if a
My question would be if a primary home, what is a setback, okay, to the adjacent property if this is not ADU? My understanding, if this is a primary home, the setback is minimum five foot, right?
That is, it's, we're talking about the rear setback, the rear setback is minimum five foot.
Correct, for a primary home.
For a primary home, correct.
Correct. Again, and then if this is attached, okay, expansion to the main house, so what is the minimum setback?
It's five foot.
Okay. And what is the city minimum lot coverage? Is 35%, right?
In most, there are areas that are not 35%, but most of the areas are 35%. For instance, Woodside Village is 50%, and there's one section of the Area District 1A does not have a lot.
So the worry for some people that people are going to build like cramping to each other, if this, if they cannot comply with 35%, they cannot build, am I right?
Not unless they request a variance, correct.
Correct. So meaning they must have the lot coverage 35%, meaning you need to have 65% of, cannot have any building.
That's correct.
Right? So this is enough of what we say the city already have ordinance, because I know county is 50% or more of a lot coverage. We already restrict 35%. I don't want to change, okay, to the county 50%. I think 35% is fair, okay, we need some open space. But at the same time, okay, if this is a main house, okay, and you adjacent to your back or side for our coordinates, it's already five foot. You say, so, so the AD, what I'm saying, ADU, you have to treat this ADU possible as a main house, okay, meaning this is their relative, even is attached or detached. And another thing, existing property, okay, I think from the guideline from the city is no minimum setback at all, right? Okay, if they have like existing garage, I remember I lived in 1950 home, the setback on the garage adjacent to my back, okay, neighbor, okay, on the 235 leave, okay, property, it's only two foot, three feet, okay?
Yes, there are some, there are some what we call non-conforming, legal non-conforming structures, some people refer to that as grandfather.
Correct.
Some of those were built.
If you see all those area on the, okay, store leave between the Lock Island and Azusa entirely complex, okay, the building 1950, I lived over there for 14 years, okay, and most of the garage is separate garage, and the garage to their neighbors is only less than three feet, am I right?
That's true.
I lived over there for 14 years, and I don't think those property can build an ADU due to, they're already more than, I think they're about 35%, okay, of lot coverage. So in that way, I don't think they have a chance to what people worry about they're going to do it, okay, am I right?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't know that neighborhood as well as you do, but yes, there are, anyplace can build an ADU, they could do it by separate, by building an ADU out of the existing square footage in the house, but to add on, they have to have the 35% lot coverage, you're correct.
Yeah, got it, but I think most important thing is if this is a primary, okay, main house, okay, it's not ADU, our coordinates is five feet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and I know we had long conversations a few days ago. I know that the state of California laws are very lenient and sometimes, you know, going to that far, we, there's no turning back, so, but I also want to find that happy medium, a good compromise. Now, I know when you talk about the setbacks and you say 25, this is only for the backyard, not the sides, right? So there is, we can, oh, go ahead.
Yes, that, you're correct, it's for the backyard.
And then I know we discussed about possible tier scale, or, you know, is that something, I mean, we discussed about that, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so we had some discussion about the possibility of having, sometimes called tiered, some kind of sliding scale where smaller lots might allow a smaller unit and larger lots might allow a larger unit, medium lots might allow a medium-sized unit. So that's one way, and you could do the same thing with setbacks as well. The smaller the lot, you know, the smaller the setback might be required, the larger the lot. So there's different ways you could do the sliding scale, and the sliding scale would kind of, you know, it would look something like this chart, this isn't a zoning standard, but it would look something like that chart where there's a size and there's standards based on the size of the lot.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding, the previous council approved, okay, or the Planning Commissioner, they approved the lot size has to be minimum 12,000, and that's the previous, okay, till the last time we say, okay, setback to see, comply with the county, or, okay, the state require us to do, okay, no minimum, okay, lot size, but they didn't tell us we have to, okay, go to a lot coverage to how many percentage. So let's what the compromise, we want to comply with what state and county, but at the same time, we want to protect our open space. That's why, that's why I say 35%, we shouldn't change it at all, okay? But the concern I have, the 12,000, you only have a 25% of our resident, the property, okay, qualified to do this. And don't forget, a lot of lot size, 20,000, 30,000, is up on the hill, is a slope. The usable pad, less than 10,000, maybe less than 7,000, most of them on the hill, okay? And so meaning what, this 25% with the 12,000 predominant on the South Hill neighborhood, okay, this is what I'm questioning you, okay, is that, okay, would be, okay, feasible for the people for more than 12,000 square feet to build if they're on the slope?
Well, I think you make, you bring up a good point, I can tell you how many of those lots are on a slope, there are some on a slope and they all have different pad sizes, but...
It's quite a lot. If you go to hillside, you go to see all those property, that is all slope, okay? And those slope, the hillside, I don't think they can build anything, I don't think even safe to build anything. And now, you reduce from 25% to maybe only 10% of the property have a flat lot that you can acquire for this 12,000, okay, requirement for them to build ADU. So meaning what, our city, West Covina, cannot build ADU at all, where there will be issue with the state or state to take action against us. So maybe you can answer me that question?
Well, I would say that we have had, I should have looked the number up, but I think it's around 13 to 15 that were applied for last year that all complied with the 12,000, so it's not that nobody's building them, there are people that are building them, but I don't know that I can fully answer your question because it's, there's too many variables. But it is true that there are lots that have, that have slope. I just don't know with the pad size, you know, if you had a pad size of eight or 10,000 square feet, you could probably still put one on there, and then it's a long way from a neighbor. So that's the sort of, I think, the logic for why you want them on big lots, because they end up being further away from the neighbor's yard.
Anyone else? Councilwoman, it's your maker.
Do we have any idea in the city, if we were to change the 25-foot rear setback to five, 15 feet, how many properties that would affect now make them eligible?
Well, I don't know, but I think it's, it would probably be most of them. Most lots would now be eligible probably to have, now, as has been talked about, there are lots in the city that are already at 35% lot coverage. There's probably, there's probably a number of those, it's probably not a majority, it's not even probably anywhere near a majority, but it may be 5 or 10% of lots that are already at the lot coverage.
One of the things I constantly heard growing up in West Covina and attending council meetings and being in the community is that people moved to West Covina for their lot sizes. They didn't want to live in a place that had micro mansions, you know, mega mansions on a lot this size. So I am concerned with reducing the setback for the rear from 25 down to five, because in a lot of neighborhoods, that will effectively impact the privacy, and I understand that you can't have windows on properties that overlook, but you're still talking about a up to 1,200 square foot residence that wasn't there, you know, overlooking two properties and possibly three, depending on how it's set. So I do think that having a five-foot rear setback is too little. We're also looking at an ordinance at a time when there's a lot of movement on the state to take away local control when it comes to ADUs. So I think it's important that we make a decision tonight on where our city stands, because I think we will need to take an active role in the state in saying, you're not taking our local control away, this is the type of community we want, and address some of those bills. So West Covina has always been a community of their houses with their nice yards, and not having everybody be on top of each other. And so I think that we need to maintain that. There is some flexibility for me in the 25 feet. I am willing to consider going lower, but overall, I'm not willing to go to five feet because I do not believe our community would want that. And that is who we represent. And for now, there's only two of us that represent the entire city. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Let me think, say, okay. Yeah, now, now I shall open it up, okay.
If I may, I have one recommended very minor revision as far as the staff report. So within subsection, it's on page four, it's only a lawyer would care, but I'm a lawyer and I care. So subsection 9B, the intent, I believe, is to make sure that the detached structure is actually behind the house, and the way that it's currently drafted is that it says that it must be behind a line parallel to the house. Well, there are an infinite number of lines parallel to the back of the house, so I suggest that we revise this so that we're only referring to one line. And so then it would instead read the front property line and the line parallel to and touching the back of the primary residence. Very minor change, clarification.
Thank you. Now we shall open up the public hearing, public, yes.
We have three agenda item position cards, one from resident Carol Mulner, who wished to oppose this item. She also commented, in my neighborhood, it would cause over, real overbuilding cannot work. West Covina resident Jim Gravici voiced his opposition, as well as Jerry Potras, opposition commented, people can apply for a variance. Although we don't have any speaker cards in favor, we have two neutral that we can call up, Herb Redhold and Phil Kaufman, if you can come forward. Okay, I take that back, we have one in favor, Jamie Lee, if you would come forward first,
Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name is Jamie Lee and I'm a resident of West Covina. I have been trying to build an ADU on my property for a few years now, and so I'm very familiar with the whole process, but this is my first time meeting all of you, so I wanted to welcome new members, congratulations. So for me, at the core of the accessory dwelling units is really not about whether or not the state, whether or not we should or should not build ADUs, because the state is, at the core of this, the state is trying to address a housing need. So the state is trying to encourage build because the city has not met their housing obligations. There is a general need for the public, hence the legislation at the state level is being passed for many years. So from my perspective, this is also an issue about governance. We want laws that are, one, fair, equitable, and logical. So why, I feel, I fully support and I'm in favor of its, of the three points of discussion, such as the lot size of 12,000 square feet. I can tell you that prior, I was someone who met a lot size of 12,000 square feet, but my neighbors could not. I met 12,000, but I don't meet the 25-foot rear setback. The whole idea about ADUs is to address the need, and the positioning of these ADUs are very specific, it's very proportional to your home, it has to be behind your home, and behind your home, it has to cut in 25 feet from the back, 10 feet from the sides. You really don't actually have a lot of room for positioning at a detached ADU. But if you wanted to add in addition, if you wanted to convert that workshop, that detached garage that's already within that vicinity, you can already have an ADU via that method. So previously, requiring a minimum lot size of 12,000 square foot meant that 75% of the people in West Covina could not build. We're not giving that opportunity for our landowners who want to build, bring value and property, stimulate the economy, there's trades folks, there are architects, there are lots of people that would benefit from a build to benefit our city. I used to live in North San Gabriel overseeing San Marino, beautiful lot sizes, beautiful ranch-style homes, beautiful little pool with a beautiful poolhouse or guest house. That in itself is a very beautiful, charming neighborhood. West Covina can maintain that charm. Studies have shown that ADUs is the healthier densification model. The population is growing, there's an aging population. These ADUs are usually housed by elderly folks on a fixed income, young adult children that can afford to purchase their own property, so they're staying at home in the back house where they have independence, but they can save up money to purchase homes. They're for caregivers. Some elderly folks need a caregiver much closer. Some people cannot afford assisted living, so having a caregiver close by that you can trade services for rent, room and board, is a good alternative for people who cannot afford assisted living. Childcare, that's a perfect, that's my case, I have elderly parents that drive to my home for the last two years to help me with childcare, I have a nine-month-old and a two-year-old, and I have to take care of my parents financially, so it's very difficult. I have to work in order to support my family and my extended family. So I just want to gauge, I just want to help people understand that we're not allowing people to build bigger than they already can today, and we're not allowing people to build closer than they already can today. If you put in the restrictions that people are saying, I think people don't understand the ADU laws. Five feet is where we are, we're just equalizing. When I talked about governance being fair, we're equalizing it. Setting a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet favors the wealthy, or people with history that have an older home. People trying to come into this, trying to buy a 12,000 square feet, it's priced really high, you can't buy in. Five feet equalizes it for everybody, and I want to be clear, we're not saying five feet for the whole property line, it's the same as your primary home, any addition, any attached ADU, it's five feet, but only 40% of it, not your whole rear setback, just a small portion. The maximum ADU size at 1,200 square feet, I myself cannot build up to 1,200 square feet because I am also governed by 35%. 35% lot coverage for a small lot or a large lot is still 35%. That is equal, like math is the equalizer for everybody. If you can only build 35%, whether you're a small lot or a large lot, people can understand and accept that principle. So I feel like you don't need all these additional variables to control people, there are already factors that can control proportion, location. An attached ADU can be attached anywhere versus a detached ADU is finite, it's behind your home and there's all these setback rules. So proportions are already there to control our situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaks, excuse me, next speaker is Herb Redhold.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm before you tonight in my capacity as a planning commissioner. I indicated my neutrality on this item because tonight the decision is 100% yours, but I'm here to also remind you that back in December, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to maintain the status quo. We had several study sessions and public hearings, we heard what the residents, what their concerns were, and the concern is that if you adopt the state standards as city standards, you're locked into that. You have nowhere to go. I'm concerned that we will lose the ability to have the discretionary review of second, of ADUs. I'll tell you, if, you know, people don't get involved in city hall and city issues unless they're, all of a sudden their home or their neighborhood is affected, and if all of a sudden they look out the backyard with no notice, no hearing, no ability to protest, five feet on the other side of their wall, all of a sudden a 1,200 square foot house is being constructed in their backyard, they're going to be down here complaining. I would urge you to, you know what, I'm, the five feet, I agree with council member Shoemaker. I would urge you to, you know what, the 5 feet, I agree with Councilmember Shoemaker. I believe there's room, if you wish, to compromise on this. 10 or 15 feet possibly could work. But the 5 feet, I believe, is just way too close. I would definitely not want to lock ourselves into the state controls. I would want to maintain some control here in West Covina, and love to have a discretionary review on ADUs. However, if there is no room for compromise, or there isn't the sentiment to compromise, I would strongly recommend that you maintain the status quo as it is now. Thank you.
Next speaker to speak in opposition is Bruce Leinbach. Phil Kaufman, followed by Marietta Spiloni.
I'm a little confused by this. As far as I understand, is that they're eliminating all restrictions on that property that is north of Amar, down by the BKK, is that right? Or, I don't understand exactly. It says ordinance, it says that you are waiving the following conditions.
Ms. Leinbach, I think you're reading that's a procedural item on the agenda.
The one right here.
Yeah, it's just, right, that's a procedural item. What it says is that we're waiving the reading when we do adoption of ordinances, so instead of reading all four or five pages, we just read the heading, which is that little paragraph. It's not related to the item of discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to know about that. Also, I wanted to talk about this, that's the thing I'm a little confused on, so, but you explained it, so thank you.
City government of West Covina has several commissions, Human Resources Commission, the Community and Senior Services Commission, and the Planning Commission. It's been my honor and privilege to have served as a member of the Community and Senior Services Commission for the last several years. In fact, new councilwoman Lopez and I became commissioners the same day, and served together until her recent election to the council. And I also like to thank Mayor Johnson for reappointing me, so I will continue to serve the city as a member of the commission. Our commissions are, in effect, tasked with providing guidance and information to the council. In fact, two or three years ago, I stood here before former council and raised the issue of many of the things that had passed through our commission, been approved by us, seemed to disappear and not always reach the council. And, you know, that was a concern at the time. Here, we have a situation where, as described by Commissioner Redtholt and Planning Director Anderson, the planning commission had hearing after hearing, public hearings, study sessions, discussions. I attended many of those meetings of the planning commission, and they received a wealth of information. They did a lot of studying and received a lot of education on the issues. They discussed it, and they gave it their due consideration. They considered all aspects of new state law, what changing our local law would mean to the community, as Commissioner Redtholt just raised the point of not losing control, something that maybe the council didn't consider at the last meeting. If certain changes are made, then the council loses control and basically gives total control over to the state, and it's not always easy to get back, if at all possible. You know, I think here, on what seemed to the people sitting in the audience at the last meeting, on not much more than a whim of certain councilmembers, after months and months of study deliberation and due consideration, the thoughtful process was voided. And the planning commission, after voting 5 to 0 to keep the law as it is, a vote that included new Councilman Costalanos, who changed his opinion at the time the city council voted, the city council ignored and basically abandoned the due consideration and thoughtful process of the planning commission. We have commissions, planning commission is mandated by state law, unlike certain other commissions, but we need to give deference to the process, and the process included, as I said, public hearings, study sessions, consideration, deliberations, education, information, and to throw that out on little more than a whim, I think, is a mistake. The council needs to reconsider and really consider what the planning commission submitted to you, and give that your due consideration.
Next speaker will be Dale Duncan after Marietta, followed by Angie Gollingham and Jim Bradley.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, and my neighbors. I agree with the other speakers that will be coming up, that will be talking about opposing the proposed changes to any ADU codes. What I and many residents in West Covina really want to ask is why do we need to keep going through this over and over again? In 2014, when this all started, we did as you asked. We went to the planning meetings, we had neighbors attend and write letters expressing how they felt, and we labored over the requirements to build ADUs when we realized that West Covina's policy was lacking. We took the steps to follow through presenting it to the then-city council. They listened to the planning department and the people of West Covina, and put the policies in place. Now, here we are again. That this council wants to undo everything that was done, no lot or smaller lot requirements, change setbacks, and again, change the square footage size, we, the people of West Covina, don't understand why. But again, we went to the meetings. Again, planning recommended the council to keep things as they are. Again, the council voted in agreement, and then the election happened. And the people were discarded, along with the planning department. Whether we supported you or your opponent, we, the people of West Covina, trust our elected council does not have a hidden agenda. We trust that you will respect and listen to the people you have been elected to represent. After all, we did exactly what you asked. We attended the meetings, spoke or wrote our opinions, only to be told that you want another vote to equally treat the residents. As I said before, there were only three people supporting the ADU changes, but there were 16 at that time opposing. And tonight, we have what, 20, 25 people here to took the time to come to be seen, along with the 76 letters that represents over 100 West Covina voters all opposing this? I have been told from two councilmembers recently, that by seconding a motion should not be considered that you are changing your vote. I ask you, how could it not be? If you vote one way, only to second a motion in the direct opposition of your vote, what other conclusion do you think we, the people of West Covina, would come to? Maybe you should clarify when you second a motion. Since 16 to 3 residents opposing any changes still was not considered what the people wanted in West Covina, we spread the word and got more residents from each district, high on the hill or further down the road, wealthy or not so wealthy, big house or small, to let the council know, this is not what we, the people of West Covina, wanted. We did as you asked. Are we being ignored again? Will the council just keep pushing this along, back and forth, to wear us down, to make us forget about it, or for us just to give up? Is this how the council behaves to get their way? Is this what you think we, the people of West Covina, voted you in office to do? Is this when we express our disapproval on the direction the council is heading the city, the answer is to tell us, "Give me six months and you're C"? I pray not. We, the people of West Covina, did as you asked, over and over again. Will we be heard now? Mayor, thank you very much for asking that question to Jeff, but the one thing I'll disagree with you is, you asked if the setbacks were changed to 5 feet, it would affect two neighbors. When we came here in 2014, and that tough-shed guest house was put up, it affected five because of her elevated lot. Ms. Shoemaker, congratulations, and thank you very much for saying that this is why people moved to West Covina, for the bigger lots. This is why I came here from the inland empire, because the houses were so on top of each other. But 5 feet, 10 feet, 15, you might not have been aware of seeing the pictures, 5 feet, 10 feet, 15, I could touch it, I'm a tall woman. It has to stay at 25 feet. Thank you.
On behalf of my wife, Wendy, and I, Honorable Mayor Johnson, and councilmembers, the planning commission met October 8, 2018, and recommended to the city council to refrain from making any changes to the code concerning ADUs, and to at least wait until the state had issued new regulations, when any necessary changes could be considered. It now appears that the city council believes that for some unknown reason, it is imperative to change the ordinance immediately, exposing the city to additional changes when state regulations are issued, which is in opposition to majority opinion, in opposition to its own planning commission recommendations, and to benefit only a few residents of this city. We are opposed to any changes until final state regulations are issued, and the impact on and benefit to our community has been thoroughly analyzed. I was born in Pomona, my wife was born in Hollywood, we were both raised in La Puente, and chose to live in West Covina because of its suburban and reasonably open environment, location, and reputation. We chose the location of our home 38 years ago, for several reasons, which I won't address here, but many of those could be impacted negatively, should ADU requirements be changed. 2014, let's go back a bit, an ADU was built behind and above our neighbor, using a tough-shed fashion design. The ordinance was then amended to prevent future invasions of privacy. It was affirmed at a 2018 planning commission meeting and recommended to city council, yet, as Marietta said, here we are again. Conclusion: The city has an ordinance that has functioned well for the last four years, and there have been and are, in fact, very few requests to build detached ADUs. The requested changes benefit a few interested parties, but potentially affect many in a negative manner. At this time, including those presented by Ms. Gillingham, we have 84 letters that have been submitted to you, and have been signed by 118 voter-eligible residents in opposition to the proposed changes. Why do we say this? Why do we feel this way? Some examples of the reality of ADU standards as proposed. Negative impact on parking, which is currently abysmal at best in many areas. Myth number one: The current ordinance disincentivizes residents from building an ADU, and they instead subdivide interior portions of a home, and/or convert garage space to living quarters. Reality: Financial concerns and the avoidance of a permit process are what incentivizes residents to do this. It's less expensive than, including construction costs, it bypasses the city permit process, and doesn't trigger reassessment of values for property tax purposes. Myth number two: More population density as a result of ADUs will enhance homeowner values. Reality: We, along with many other residents, purchased homes in West Covina because of its suburban charm and openness. Adding units and people will negatively impact that appeal, and will not, in fact, increase values. We believe that many people still share a dream and enjoyment of a great city in a suburban and open atmosphere like West Covina. We are blessed with a reasonably good view of the San Gabriel Mountains, and regularly remark while sitting on our patio how fortunate we are to be able to enjoy such a treasure in our area. Changing and relaxing the existing ordinance has the potential to take something away from us that we did not believe could or would be taken away, and is, in fact, something we sacrificed to purchase some 38 years ago. The impact on municipal services, including fire, safety, the sewer system, and utilities. We're constantly reminded by suburban water of the need to conserve water use due to drought, by watering restrictions imposed on us, by the rising cost of water, and certainly by the new green or brown lawns and dying landscaping. It does not appear that studies have been conducted on the impact of increased noise, safety concerns, related to fire suppression, and law and code enforcement, or even how to monitor, control, and regulate the illegal conversion of property to residential rentals, and contradicting the intended use of ADUs, along with new and larger financial burdens on the city and us as a community. Increasing the maximum square footage from 800 to 1,200 is tantamount to allowing multiple residences on a lot intended for one, and it flies in the face of the intended purpose of an ADU. ADUs are intended for elderly patients, as our parents, as so eloquently stated by Mayor Pro Tem Wu at the last meeting. Proposed changes will not, in fact, lessen housing shortages in our area. Finally, the egregious aspect of the council's proposed changes relates to reducing the current setback requirement from 25 to 5 feet. This is without any significant discussion or consideration of its impact on neighbors, and most certainly, not an attempt at any type of a reasonable compromise between the current and proposed setback restrictions. This is essential to maintain the privacy expected, assumed, and deserved for every resident's quiet enjoyment of their homes and yards. A setback of 5 feet will be an infringement on our privacy. Would you like to have an ADU overlooking your property with picture windows and intimate views of your yard and living quarters? Would you like to have your view of our surrounding area interrupted and/or destroyed by the addition of an ADU?
Please, your signs up.
I, along with 118 voter-eligible residents, urged, I'd like the same consideration that was given, Ms. Rosati. I've got one paragraph.
Okay, 30 seconds.
I, along with 118 other voter-eligible residents, urged the city council to refrain from making any changes currently to allow its planning commission to function as intended, providing the council with its recommendations after duly considering opinions of city residents, the analysis of the projected increase in city services, benefits for our community, and conformity with state legislation when enacted. Thank you very much for your time.
I'll be very brief. I do have all the signed signatures, and by the way, they're still coming in tonight, so we have, we can add to that 85. I can't say it any more clear than Marietta and Dale. But lastly, Mayor Pro Tem Wu, you stated you don't like density, is such a contradiction to your actions and your request from December 18. The planning commission listened to the public and ruled, please respect their findings, and many residents who came to those meetings and spoke, not just your circle of friends and the people who supported your campaign. Lastly, I will support this, and I will quote Commissioner Holt, who said, "Let's wait and see what the state mandates to the city before we make any changes. Why are we addressing this when we haven't been forced by the state?" And I'm kind of disappointed with you, Councilman Costalano. You said in the planning commission, as recent as August and September of 2018, when this subject of ADUs was discussed, to enlighten the rest of the council, you should have been able to enlighten the rest of the council on that December 18, and articulate what we had gone to those meetings about. I don't know why you didn't, but that was your time to articulate it on December 18. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Ms. Shoemaker, for understanding and reiterating that this is exactly why most of us residents moved here, for this suburban housing, track housing or housing. And thank you, Mayor, for putting this earlier on.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and residents, my name is Jim Bradley. My wife and I have been single-family resident homeowners for 46 years in District 4. In trying to decide what is best for myself, as well as other residents, I have come to the conclusion that the core ADU issue is about room, not so much the room inside a dwelling, rather, it is having adequate space between neighboring homes, room to stretch out and not feel crowded. Having ample room makes us so much happier and better neighbors. Therefore, I strongly oppose the recommended draft ordinance presented tonight, and I do strongly support keeping the 12,000-square-feet minimum and the backyard setback of 25 feet. All have been said so eloquently tonight, I'll skip part of my presentation, but what, here's an example of what can happen to relations between neighbors when there isn't enough room between them. Real-world case: Two good neighbors whose property adjoins ours live next door to each other. Several years ago, the previous owner of one of the homes enlarged his garage to be within 4 feet from the property line. This garage now stands very close to the family room of the other home, where the residents do most of their TV-watching, entertaining, et cetera. Guess what? Even though there is a fence between them when not Even though there is a fence between them, when the husband of the first home is working in or around his garage, the noise made is frequently a serious distraction in the family room of the second home. This started out to be only a minor irritation. Mild words were spoken at first, but over the years, feelings have built up to the point that each family considers the other to be unreasonable and the neighbor from hell, and are not shy about letting the neighborhood know it. Goodwill between those neighbors no longer exists. I can envision situations like this occurring more and more often if the municipal code for ADUs is changed, allowing ADUs to be taller and closer to other dwellings. As a final thought, a few advocates of looser ADU zoning may be pleased if these looser changes are eventually approved, but it will be their neighbors who ultimately pay the price, not them. I am respectfully requesting the city council to apply the time-tested standard of the greatest good for the greatest number and uphold Code Amendment 18, and uphold the city Planning Commission's recommendations.[683.01][683.01](APPLAUSE).
Our final speaker tonight is Robert Kirk.
Hi. My name is Bob Kirk. I've lived in West Covina. My wife was born in West Covina 70 years ago. We moved here in 1953 and have been here ever since. My family has deep roots in West Covina. Her grandfather was the first mayor, donated land to the first school. She taught in West Covina for 40 years. We had our business here for 22 years. We stayed in West Covina because it was a suburb. We liked the people, we liked the town, we liked to be able to go in our backyard, have barbecues, people pools. We want to retain that. We don't want somebody on every side of us looking in our backyard where we have some privacy and want to have entertainment. I know we're old, I know times change. We're not the rural community that we were when we moved here, but we'd still like to retain some aspect of that, and that's being able to enjoy our own yards. I'm opposed to the ordinance change. Thank you.[799.44][799.44](APPLAUSE).
Okay, that being our last speaker, I'd just like to make a comment first. When I, to one resident, when I said 5 foot on either side of your property, I meant, I've explained if you're on the same level. If you're on the same level and they put a piece, if someone built a, for example, if I built a room on the back of my yard in the corner, I'm affecting, matter of fact, I'm affecting three neighbors when you start to think about it, it's a three-corner there. I'm affecting three neighbors on it. So, and what they're doing is they're lining a sight, they can't see over, they, you know, it's blocking everything. So that's what I meant by that. I've seen your property, I was there that, at the Planning Commission that evening when you presented it. So I've, I've been going to Planning Commissions for many, many years. So I do understand it. So at that time, I do want to say to me and for the residents, I've heard from a lot of the residents, as a council member, I was elected to represent the residents of West Covina. Yes, we do have districts now, but that doesn't change for me. I'm still elected to represent the residents, and that's what I'm doing. Now, as of tonight, like one of the residents said, there's 84 letters they have now and more coming in. I've received about 18 emails. I've received four phone calls, and not one of them were for it. They were all against it. I've been against the change since it was brought up. I believe the Planning Commission got it right. You know, we have a 25-foot setback for a reason. Yes, my garage is built in 1950s, and the garage is 5 foot from the property line, but it's a garage. The houses are in front of it. So our garage is 5 foot from, but it's detached, it's behind, and the houses next to it are in front, the same distance in minus, so I don't, you know, no neighbors ever complained about my garage back there. But there was for a reason. Even back then, it was built for a reason. Sure, the side yard were 5 foot, but they still had the big setbacks. They never built our properties 5 foot from the neighbor behind us. So I'm a tendency to, I do definitely, I'm opposed to any changes. So tonight, I will be voting against any changes to onto it. I do believe we should leave it as a 25-foot setback, and that's what I'm voting. So, you're next.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all the residents. I did receive a few phone calls as well and a few emails, but I just wanted to say thank you actually, how you present things as well. I actually appreciate the civilized moment without the screaming and the yelling and the hollering. So thank you. I don't want 5 feet on the backyard. I do have children, I do enjoy my yard space as well. And even though we are in districts, I, like I said, I do represent the whole city as a whole. So I heard from a lot of residents in every district, so, but thank you again. For now, I'm just going to keep it the way it was prior, so I'll go ahead and oppose this, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, okay, I hope, okay, the audience understand, okay, the election is over, okay? It's no point to attack. What is my intention, my small circle or something? I hope you understand, this is my conscience, what I think is right or wrong. Maybe you disagree with me, but I hope you understand. I don't have a small circle of people I try to please, okay? I try to do this in the right way. I know a lot of residents, okay, they're against what I'm trying to do, and I try to explain to everybody why, where this is coming from, okay? This is coming from the housing crisis. This is not from me. This is from all the state and the county continue telling us, and the state already suing some city, okay? And they're suing the Huntington Beach regarding the housing issue, okay? And, okay, and they even have assembly bills coming up that do not even allow the city to change the ADU, okay, requirement, okay? What I'm coming from is this, okay? This is not my fight, okay? I live in a much bigger lot. I can do this. I think you know where I live. I think this is a fairness for our residents, and I 100% okay, understand, okay, the resident, they don't want, okay, the other houses too close to their home. 100% agree. I do not want, okay, my neighbors very close to my house. But at the same time, okay, what kind of guideline we have, okay? We already have a main house, and the coordinate is 5-foot setback, okay? So if they do the extension, okay, this, they can do the same thing. This is still something, so this is attached. But right now, we're talking about is detached, okay? And for the people who want to do it, I understand, it's okay. You disagree what I'm saying, I 100% okay, respect, okay, your disagreement. But again, where I'm coming from is based on what the county, okay, and what the state, the coordinate, and I tried to apply to our city beforehand, okay? So hopefully, we don't have to address later on to talk about this again when the state, they request us. We have to do is what, exactly what they want us to do. There are our, okay, higher position, the law required, because again, again, if you read all the article and come from their law, okay, and they're talking about the housing crisis, and we don't, all the city doesn't build enough of housing for our residents, and that's why you can see a lot of people, senior citizens, maybe not you guys, but quite a lot of senior citizens, okay, or young people, they displaced due to the rent is so high, the property value is way too high, and really have the issue. And another point is this, okay? I understand we want to keep the same, the big law, this and that, but you can see the West Covina changing, the demographic changed, you see the, we're building, I disagree, those apartment, okay, and you see on the downtown area, they're building all those, okay, and condo, and it really has become a really crampy, small tiny, it's no yard at all. I don't think there's a quality of life, okay? I hope people still have a backyard. But what we're trying to do is how can we find a way and compromise and find, okay, to have, allow people to do, to build for equal rights, no matter I have a bigger lot or some people have a smaller lot, but they have a, okay, equal right. But this equal is subject to the city's 35% requirement. The 35% requirement, lot coverage, meaning you have, you must have a 65% of open space. So meaning, we're not allowed then, like county, county is 50% or more, okay, lot coverage, that's too much, okay? So we're not allowed the people building like entire lot with all the property. We only allow them to no more than 35%. So in that way, if you go to 35% lot coverage, you go to 12,000 square feet, you go to 25 feet, I don't think really anybody can build an ADU, and then potentially, I don't know who is going to be ambulance chaser, come to our city and say, "You on purpose doing this, okay, because, okay, you scared about your voter, and then you don't want to do what the compliance by the state or county," and then, okay, my, the same issue we will have. This is what, where I'm coming from. It's not from my circle. I don't have any benefit to do this. No matter you believe or not, I can care less, okay? But I just hope, when you discuss over here, please be professional, okay? And no matter what, let's discuss this civilized, okay? We got, you disagree or disagree. So in that way, I will be talking about 35% lot size coverage, go with what county they already have, okay? Regarding a lot of restriction. You cannot build this ADU more than 50% of your main house. If your main house is 1,500 square feet, 35% lot size coverage, you cannot build more than 750 square feet, okay, parallel on your backyard, okay? Another thing is not everybody will build. It just allows some people, okay, want to build, have a chance to build, equal right, equal property right, okay? And they still have a lot of restriction from our planning department regarding the window, regarding this design and that. Again, I understand, we want to protect this big lot and, okay, regarding to protect our, this kind of open space, okay? And you live in your property far away from your neighbor, I agree 100%, because I live in a small lot and 235 lived for 14 years. My neighbor's window is close to my window, our side to side, setback is very close. My garage almost attached to my next-door neighbor's backyard, okay? And I live over there, my kid born in that house, okay, 235 lived, okay, West Covina. Okay, so I understand about what kind of living this is, but again, okay, we have a good time over there, we very cozy with our neighbor, okay? Even their party, we can smell some pot, okay, this and that, that we don't like, okay? But that is in the backyard. But other than that, I hope, okay, my colleagues will understand, we need to comply with what state and law regarding the future, and I really want to go with what, okay, this about. Again, we're not creating a new thing, we create what the state and counties are about. So anyway, I want to make the motion to approve with 35% lot size coverage and, okay, comply, okay, with the county or state coordinate.
Before we do that, Councilwoman Schumaker wants to say something.
I just wanted clarification, because this issue of fairness keeps coming up. If you are adding on to your house, you still have considerations for rear yard setbacks. What is that currently? Because I know you can encroach more than 40% into your rear yard.
Yeah, so, that's correct. The current setback is 25 feet. It is 25 feet, but there's these exceptions that allow you to cover 40% of the rear yard with structure, up to 5 feet, and no higher than 15 feet tall.
So an addition can currently go within 5 feet of a rear setback, or not?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so for the issue of fairness, maybe we need to have a discussion of changing that ability, or is that state law?
No, that's not state law. Our setbacks are totally up to the City of West Covina to determine what they'd like to do with setbacks.
And so I think, depending on how the council votes tonight, that maybe it's a discussion to apply the rules equally across additions and accessory dwelling units, and also maybe clarify things like garages, workshops, sheds are not part of that, and set standards for those, and make all of this more clear for residents.
Councilman Staxler.
Thank you. I actually think that's a really good recommendation by Councilmember Schumaker. That would kind of simplify if we were in line there, because that does cause confusion, and it isn't very clear why the difference exists. And also to the residents who are here, thank you for being here. I appreciate all of the comments. And, you know, this has been a tough subject that we've been battling with for years. There have been good arguments on both sides by previous council members and residents, and I do understand where the frustration comes from. My December 18 comment to support Mayor Pro Tem Wu's request to take a look at this again. My intent was to reiterate what I said on the August 11 Planning Commission meeting, where the prior council sent this back to us again, which was surprising, for further action. There was no action, but in the interest of trying to find a common ground, I made the suggestion of having, making the minimum lot size 11,000 square feet and allowing an 800-square-foot ADU, and on lots of 12,000 square feet or bigger, allowing a 1,200-square-foot ADU. Those were arbitrary numbers that I threw out just to try to find a middle ground that I thought would be palatable to the residents, and that was only an increase of 2% of the residences from where we currently stand. I also agree that 5 feet is pretty close, and I would be more comfortable with a 15-foot setback. I think 25 is a lot. It is limiting for all residents who want to, well, as, you know, we're discussing, maybe want to look at the primary structure, how far we want it to go back. You know, when, during the campaign, as I was going around, I did encounter some neighborhoods that I realized there would be, it would be nearly impossible to put an ADU there because of parking. That's what I meant on my prior comments that I had new information. And also looking at a lot of the neighborhoods from an aerial view using Google Earth or Google Maps, it puts things in perspective of what's feasible and what's not. I'm currently an escrow for a lot that's about 14,000 square feet, and I have no interest in any ADUs. I also value privacy, and so I get where residents are coming from. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made by Ms. Gillingham, Mr. Duncan, Ms. Lee, and this is a tough issue. My intent was to try to find a common middle ground. I don't, I'm not going to build an ADU. I was just trying to find that sweet spot that benefits all and has minimal impact on our city with maximum benefit. So, as I mentioned earlier, my original intent was to just reiterate my recommendation from August 11 and see if it had support, and go from there. Thank you.
So I have a question. So you want to amend the, okay, the motion to, from 25 feet to 15 feet?
Yeah, that's what I would be comfortable with.
And how about the lot size? Lot size right now is 12,000 square feet, it's only like less than 20, 20 or 25% of property.
25%, yeah. And what I would be comfortable with is just repeating what I had mentioned back on August 11. On lots that are 11,000 square feet and bigger, I proposed 800-square-foot ADU.
How about the lot size? If the state and, okay, and the state and, okay, county, they basically is no limited lot size, okay?
No limit, right?
No, they have no limit.
That's right.
And another thing is, okay, they have, okay, for county, they have 50% of, okay, lot coverage. Okay, let me finish quickly. So I want to see what amendment, you want to do my motion, so I will agree to.
So I want to see what amendment, you want to do my motion, so I will agree to amend this. So, so the lot size, we have 35%, they are more than 50% coverage. So what you feel comfortable or the council, what kind of lot size? We can compromise, we can see, okay, and, okay, what can the last side you feel to the council majority, what you feel about lot size will be comfortable for you guys? So rather than, okay, we, we, we make it dead or something?
I, I'm comfortable with 35%. I think 50% would be too much.
50% is fine, but with a lot size?
Oh, lot size, yeah, I, I'm still, I still think 11,000 square foot lot size would be the minimum lot size I'm comfortable with.
So 11 would be a...
So that'd be 27% of, roughly.
Maybe 9,000?
So 2% change.
How about the 9,000 for 40% people to have a chance?
Okay, I, I don't want the conversation to keep going back and forth, just because we have what we have in front of us now. And what I've proposed in terms of really looking at this ordinance and setting what can encroach on, things like sheds that don't affect privacy and clarifying what the setbacks are for all units when it comes to rear setbacks. I would just recommend for kind of efficiency with the city, that we take action tonight and then give action or that they bring it back with the changes that, you know, the changes to the entire code.
Councilwoman, you can have that as a matter of mayor if you'd like.
That, and so I just think that this has gone back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. You've had it at the Planning Commission, you haven't had this idea because I wasn't here. So we need to, in my opinion, tie this up tonight for the people who are here and then come back and really look at this. Because Mr. Wu does make a good point, and I mentioned it when I first spoke, there are bills at the state right now that may severely impact this and may not let us keep the 25-feet setback. And so I believe by the time this comes back to us and staff looks at us, you're going to be later into the legislative session. And so we'll know if it's going to be a second year bill or if they're going to just rule on, you know, vote on it now.
Good, good points, Councilwoman Schumaker. I think we do currently have clarity on the non-habitable structures. Jeff, do we, do we have clarity on that? As I remember, they're, they're more lenient because people can't...
Yeah, I, I, I think there is clarity in the code. I, I think what Councilman Schumaker, Councilmember Schumaker is referring to is the fact that maybe that needs to be considered and maybe it shouldn't be 5 feet for anything, or if there is, maybe it should only be for non-habitable structures, not for habitable structures. And so, yes, I think, we, we actually had a, a similar conversation of that at the Planning Commission study session at one point in time. I think that was on the previous code amendment. So I think that is a worthy discussion and maybe way to address what might come down from the state in the future.
And another point I forgot, and Jeff, maybe you could opine on this too. I, I might, I think we maybe would want to remove AHQs from the code and just limit to only ADUs. I think that a lot of people who choose to build AHQs might eventually use them as ADUs anyway, so why not just build them as ADUs? So maybe we could consider that altogether.
I think there's a logic to that as well, yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go with the state standards. Do I have a second on that motion? Or seeing none, it fails. Now, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we go with the Planning Commission's recommendations and leave our lot size at 12,000 to 25-foot setback at this time until further... All right, that's a motion. Now you have a second on that.
A point of clarity. If this goes down, doesn't the code stay as it is now? Which is what the...
Well, yes and no. You, you may recall when, in my presentation, I told you about something that wasn't very, hadn't had very much discussion. That would change and, there are some changes to the code that would go into place, but it would not change the minimum lot size, it would not change the rear setback, it wouldn't change these discussion topics that we have. But there are some clarifications and the, our city attorney has brought up some of those things that we need to clarify and make sure they're clear in the code. And so, yes, there would be some of those changes.
So by adopting theirs, we're, we would be approving the clarification and keeping everything else the same?
Correct.
Okay, then I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Have a roll call, please.
To read into the record, ordinance number 2449, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Division 11 of Article 12 of Chapter 26 of the Municipal Code to amend setback and location relating, related zoning regulations applicable to accessory dwelling units. Councilman Castellanos.
So, just for ultimate clarity, this, this would just do nothing, we're just waiting to see what happens from the state.
As I understand the motion, the motion would be to adopt the ordinance that was presented at the prior City Council meetings, at the December meeting before, the December 18th City Council meeting?
No, no, that's wrong.
What, sorry, then I didn't understand the motion. What is the motion?
The motion I made is that we keep the standards that the Planning Commission had as, as 12,000 square foot with a 25-foot setback. That's my motion.
So it would be to adopt the ordinance that is before us tonight with that, with that revision? That it would be 1,200 square feet?
No, no.
No?
12,000 square foot, the way it is right now, 12,000 square foot, lot size with a 25-foot setback. Jeff, how do I do this?
Yeah, let me, let me back up. History is fun. The Planning Commission on October 9th recommended a code amendment. It went to the City Council on November 20th, I believe is the right date. The second reading came on December 18th. All those were the same regulations. There was no change to the regulations till tonight. This is the first time we've had any different regulations. Those regulations would set a 12,000 square foot, would keep the 12,000 square foot minimum lot size. They would continue to require the 25-foot rear setback. They would alter the locational standard so it's clear where a detached struck, where a detached ADU can be and where an attached ADU be, would be. And then they would do some other kind of minor cleanup things for, for...
Square footage?
Well, the square footage wouldn't change. It wasn't part of the discussion up to that point, it would stay at 800. So that's what was, that's what the Planning Commission did, that's what City Council reviewed the first time, that's what City Council had before them at the second reading in December.
Okay, my motion is exactly what Jeff said.
Well, then I have a follow-up question for the city attorney.
Sorry, I thought I had it on, I apologize. Hopefully that would be to include that slight revision that I recommended this evening, which I assume is acceptable.
Okay, knowing that we basically want to do a new amendment and change a lot of this part, procedurally, time-wise, is it better to just leave things as they are, period? Have the recommended code die and then come back with the new discussion? Because the rules are already in place for the...
So, you are correct that we currently have rules, but there are, but the amendment that is recommended, if, staff is recommending that you adopt something.
Yes.
And so my recommendation to you would be this evening that you adopt something, whether it's this or a different ordinance, that is your call, because there are revisions that are non-controversial, that everybody has agreed to, that need to be made to comply with state law.
Okay.
And, and I think also, to add to the discussion, what you're referring to as we move forward are different sections of the code than what we're looking at here. The rear yard setback for the single family is not in the ADU section, it's in a different section altogether. The AHQ section, what we called guest houses before, is in a different section. So those are different things that we've been studying, that's another reason why clean, finish this code amendment and then initiate a new code amendment to study those specific things.
And so you and the public are clear, we will return, assuming that this gets approved this evening, then we would return with a second reading of the ordinance that you could confirm, yes, that is really what we meant.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Nope.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, it passes 4 to 1. And at this time, I'd like to remind everybody, we are now officially closing the public hearing. I should have did it sooner than I. And at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, now we'll call this council meeting back together at 9:40, or close to it.
9:00, you should go home at 12 o'clock.
We're at 9:45.
I know, we have to come upstairs.
Okay.
I still have a day job, okay?
I know, I'm not the boss, so I don't get to...
We are now moving to the calendar. At this time, please, at this time, we've already discussed it between the council members. Councilwoman Lopez would like to poll item number two. Councilman Castellanos would like to poll number seven.
No, eight.
Eight. And Mayor Pro Tem would like to poll number seven. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay, if not, I'd like to make a motion to accept all the other final items on this in the council calendar.
Second?
Yeah, we have a motion, second. May I roll call, please?
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Now, we shall move to item number two, which is, Councilwoman Lopez.
Well, there are a few things, you know, when you look at investment, you look at if we're making a good, making a good return. And I was looking at the list and I see that the, the market value is less than the blue book value. And I just want to know, how much money are we losing on a monthly basis? And in regards to certain investments, are we going to be having any changes? As well as, I know Ms. Rosati brought up a few concerns that I'd like to bring up. I'd like to see like the history of, of this whole investment and where the money is going.
Let me talk some generics first and I'll turn it over to Marcy to talk more about the details of the investment report. First and foremost, a couple of years ago, the city contracted with Chandler Assets to do investments on behalf of the city. At that time, they provided that they, they projected they would make a certain percentage rate of return on our investments, the city's reserves or fund balance. What has happened is that that rate of return has not been as great as we believed it would have been. So a few months back, actually several months back, the city actually notified Chandler that we are terminating the agreement with them. However, we don't just, as soon as you terminate, you have to start downsizing your investments with them because they have different mature dates. So we're not going to say that, you know, if we have, let's say, 10, 15 million dollars, we're going to just pull it all out at once because we will lose hundreds of thousands of dollars of opportunity for investments. So what we're doing is, is we're now reducing the amount that we're investing with them and putting into the county pool system that cities utilize. It actually has a similar rate of return that Chandler was getting, one. Two is it provides liquidity of those assets as well. So as we talk about cash flow needs, we take money out of the Chandler investments or the county pool to make payroll and investments that first several months of the, the year. So let me now turn it over to Marcy, she can give a little bit more detail on that and answer specific questions.
Good evening, councilmembers. First of all, our investments, city investments, our, our investment report reflects all city pool cash and investments. So that's for all city funds. Successor Agency also has its own set of accounts, which are starting in January, we're going to provide one report instead of two. Having said that, the priorities for managing municipal funds is first, safety, second, liquidity, and lastly, return on investment. Safety means to invest in safe investments so the city has low-risk investments, so the city's not losing money. Having said that, the city's pool cash works at the way we tend to, the investments are supposed to be surplus cash, so that we have sufficient money to pay the city bills through our checking account. So Chandler was set up with surplus cash, same as LASIP, which is a pool cash investment with the county. So it is meant to provide liquidity for our city's checking account. So it's normal to tap into our investment portfolio in order to provide cash for our checking account in order to pay the city bills. So that's normal. In regards to Chandler, there was a, they set up to invest the city's surplus cash, part of it. And when that agreement was made, they had an idea of how much the cash flows were needed on a monthly basis and so forth. At that point in time, the city was having less cash flows, for example, the per se oil prepayment, which is in the tune of 10 million, was not being done in July like it's been done now. When the first time it happened, we noticed then that Chandler, we had to really tap into the Chandler investment to reduce, to provide the cash flows to make those payments. At that point in time, we did, Chandler had to liquidate some of the investments that were longer term in order to provide that cash flow because it was unexpected. Since then, the city canceled that contract because we noticed that the cash portfolio, our investment portfolio is being reduced. So we need more liquidity, which means we cannot invest in such long-term investments. We're currently working with Chandler in order to minimize the impact of liquidating those investments. So they did provide us decent return on investment, however, the city now needs the liquidity. So we plan on, as time goes, to minimize the impact, as I mentioned, to not take that many losses to do it over time as cash is needed from that investment.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to accept item number two.
Second?
I have a motion, second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, it passes 5-0. Next item would be item number seven, which is for Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
This one would be the, okay, memorandum, okay, so, because in the back is eight, okay, so, but it's a seven. So anyway, I, I know we approved the last time, the close action, the COLA, the 2%. And then here, okay, I just wanted maybe the manager to explain to us, I know that this is, this is a previous city council, we approved the adjustment for the dispatchers, right? The non-sworn, okay, staff. So my question would be, how many non-sworn, okay, staff, the dispatch, dispatchers, okay? And what is comparison currently after the adjustment compared with all the surrounding city, okay, so we don't losing, okay, the staff?
So let me try and do a couple of things. So the non-sworn group make up a variety of folks that help support public safety, specifically our police department, including records, clerks, and dispatchers, and CSOs and other folks. Their MOU expired June 30th of 2017. So we've been without an agreement since that time with the non-sworn group. During that same time, we've negotiated agreements with the other miscellaneous groups, which is like mid-management, general group, confidential exempt, and others, which provided salary increases as of July 1st, 2018, along with some other incentives for those groups. What was important about this MOU, and we had a discussion with the city council, is that this city council knows that the, the staff is working with you to try and make some structural changes to the MOUs of the various bargaining groups. And this is that first step. So what has happened in here is the bargaining group, the non-sworn group, has accepted increases in paying what's called their fair share of their, their pension costs, which means that's more money out of their paycheck that they're going to be paid towards our pension obligations. Two is, what's really important is they're capping their medical benefit now. Right now, it adjusts every year based on what are the, the costs is for the Kaiser medical plan. And so what I mean by that is... Two is, what's really important is they're capping their medical benefit now. Right now, it adjusts every year based on what are the, the costs is for the Kaiser medical plan. And so, what I mean by that is, if you are an employee only, you get the employee Kaiser rate. If you're employee plus 1, you get the Kaiser employee 1 rate or Kaiser family. And so, that's how it's worded in the MOU. So, each year, as medical costs increase, which on average around 5% or more per year for the city, that means they get those automatic increases. This is one of the first groups to agree, actually is the first group to agree, that all members as of July 1st, or excuse me, January 1st, will be capped at the Kaiser LA region rate, which is huge concession on their part and a benefit for the city now because that means our medical costs for this group as of January 1st, 2019 are capped. So, that makes it better and easier for us to budget for, and we don't have these automatic increases. And so, this goes back to those attempts to try and modify these MOUs. In addition, they're not asking for their salary increase to be retroactive to July 1st of 2018, which is when the other bargaining groups got their raises. So, that alone is also saving the city money. Now, mind you, this MOU does have a cost. It's, it is minimal for the current fiscal year because of the timing and as well as the fact that the raises aren't until next year of the 2% COLA. But we are also seeing savings next year because of those caps and the additional purse contributions. In addition, we took a section out of here. We're having a lot of problems in our public dispatch. We are seeing that our, on average, our dispatchers have paid considerably less than our surrounding cities. And so, we're recommending adjustment to those ranges. What we have been seeing is, is that, and it's a very hard position to fill, people apply to become a dispatcher here in West Covina, they apply with other cities at the same time. They get approved to become a dispatcher here in West Covina, they get their training, and then they get word from another city saying, "Oh, we would like you to come work for us." And we pay $1,000 or $1,500 more a month than West Covina does. So, that we've been having a flood of new dispatchers leaving West Covina, go to other cities. And so, that's why we presented the council that we must adjust the dispatcher salaries at this time. We are not looking to adjust any other salary ranges other than dispatchers because of that difficulty. And I think that this will be, you know, an example, what we can share with the other bargaining groups, of the other reforms that we plan to do with the rest of the organization.
Okay, very good. Okay, I think we talked about this last time, the COLAs for the 2%. And how many staff, you haven't answered my question, right? Yes?
Forty-two members of the city.
So, 42 members, and how many, okay, adjustment for dispatchers for this, okay, for retaining, for them to stay with our city? How many dispatcher we have?
So, the adjustment affects 12, 16 budget, I'm sorry, 14 budgeted positions. We have 10 dispatch positions budgeted and four senior dispatch or senior communications operator. And those are the two positions that have been adjusted.
So, currently, how many dispatcher we have? That's my question.
We have four vacancies at dispatcher, so we have six current dispatchers, and we are fully positioned at senior dispatcher. So, there are four vacancies currently. Four vacancies of the 14 budgeted positions.
So, basically, we have 10?
Correct.
Okay, 10. So, we, we have 14 staff that we, on our budget. Okay, but now we have four vacancy and we have 10?
Correct. And to be clear, of the, of the six, six dispatchers that are currently employed and working, one is a 960 employee who is not permanent. So, we will have to fill that position very soon as well.
So, that one is part-time?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we only have a nine? Or we have nine and a half?
Correct.
Okay, so, so with this adjustment, okay, do we budget this last time or this is? I think last time we already approved. So, what, okay, I know we need to do adjustment, we approved last time due to, okay, to compete with a neighboring city to retain our dispatcher to stay with our city. So, so, but this is going to increase how much? Okay, so, so 14 position, okay, and we increase about 10%, am I right? 10% to 15% of their salary? Am I right?
Well, we have an estimate for, for the current fiscal year, the increase will be approximately $45,000 fully budgeted. So, that would take into consideration all of the positions that are currently in the budget.
$45,000 a month?
No, through the end of the year, through June 30th, 2019.
So, $45,000 we already budget to, okay, to our fiscal year?
We anticipate that being an additional cost if hypothetically speaking, everyone was positioned, if it was fully staffed, which we know it's not fully staffed. It was not budgeted, but we do anticipate the salary savings that we are generating from the vacancies now to cover the additional cost. And the $45,000 that we are quoting is a very conservative estimate.
So, so basically, we didn't budget additional for position?
No, we've budgeted for all of the positions. What we didn't budget for was the salary adjustment occurring in the first pay period of March.
Oh, that would be how much?
And so, March through June 30th, 2019, we expect and have estimated it to be about $45,000.
So, $45,000 the difference?
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
If, if we do this adjustment, then we can have more, we are become more attractive to have a more dispatcher to work for us or stay with us?
That, that's correct. We will, we anticipate being far more competitive. Prior to the adjustment, our dispatchers were ranked 16th of 16 survey cities that have comparable positions. And our senior dispatchers were ranked 6th of 7 comparable cities that have comparable positions and dispatch operations. With the adjustment, our dispatch position will be 8, well, it will move up from 16 to 8, and the seniors will move to number 4 of 7.
So, so currently, do you have anybody applied to those vacant position?
Currently, we are working on a new recruitment. We just completed a recruitment, but it only yielded a few candidates, and we are going to run another recruitment to, again, fill the vacant positions. Because the, the first recruitment did not fill all of the vacant positions. It's a, it's a very tough recruitment. It's, it's very challenging, and it's very hard. It's a very unique position, and it's, it's one of those positions that is difficult to fill.
And I understand. I have a tour to the facility. I saw all the staff, they're working very hard. Okay, and I know it's a very tough job, and plus you continue to receive calls, okay? And do they have always onsite training to, okay, to make sure they will, okay, upkeep about their professionalism?
That's correct. As part of this adjustment, we did revise the job specifications for both positions to include tier dispatching. And in the staff report, I described tier dispatching as, as being a more optimal and a more efficient method of dispatching emergency services. With that, they are taking on more responsibilities, which would, is also commensurate with the additional salary adjustment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I can have the fire chief, I know he's, I'll put him on the spot. I think it'd be beneficial for him to describe tier dispatching to the community and the benefit we're going to be getting by having this additional training. Sorry to put you on the spot, chief. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, and everybody in attendance. So, yeah, so tier dispatching. So, the way our dispatching works right now, if someone dials 911, we dispatch the, regardless of the severity, whether it be a basic life type situation or advanced life, we send the closest engine, any rescue ambulance, and most likely, it turns out to be BLS, and we send our paramedics with that patient to a local hospital. With tier dispatching, what they'll end up doing is ask a few more questions, and then they'll determine the level of response. And so, then it might be this, be the closest engine and not sending our paramedics, which leaves them available for another call for advanced life support, and we would send like a BLS ambulance, who then would transport, then would leave our paramedics available for the next call. As of right now, we have the potential of having all of our paramedics transporting BLS life support to the hospital, and then we run out of our paramedics. That seems to be the, the common trend that we've been having is no ambulance is available. With tier dispatching, with the dispatchers getting the training and asking a few more questions, they're able to triage the situation and send the appropriate response, even to a point where might not, you might even have to send the fire engine or the paramedic ambulance, or you might just send a private BLS to transport, thus leaving the fire department engine company available as well as the paramedics.
On average, how many call a day, okay, the dispatcher receive?
Oh, I don't, I don't have that information about how many calls they receive. You mean for fire department or in total, in general? Well, we run, I mean, our call volume's going up, and I, we ran nearly 10,000 calls last calendar year, so I can't do the quick math on that, but not every 911. I don't know right off the top, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, yeah.
No, it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of calls, okay, daily.
Roughly, give or take any 20 to 30, 20 to 30 calls a day.
Okay.
Dispatch.
They're doing a good job, okay? Thank you so much.
They're doing a great job. You're welcome.
Okay, I have no problem to do this adjustment because they are the so-called service group, and they're very needed for our community, and we really need to keep, okay, the staff has been trained by, by, okay, the city, and we spend time and money, we don't want them to be robbed by some other city. Sending to my company, I trained my staff, I don't want them to be, somebody pay a little bit more and they disappear. So, so this adjustment, as long as the city can afford it, then we have to do it. Okay, and then the last question I have regarding the COLA, the adjustment, okay, that we are going to have a $285,925 estimate with, I think we talked about that, that about, about $60 for those adjustment, and then we already budget this thing, right? Because right now, we have the, we're going to talk later on because the budget issue we have. So, do we have the budget, okay, for this adjustment?
Yes. So, based on the projections of the additional savings that they're going to generate in their MOU, the cost for the remaining part of this fiscal year will be absorbed in the current budget. We will have a discussion about next year's budget and the impacts that this will have. We did describe that a little bit in the fiscal impact, which we estimate is around $49,000 net increase in next year's budget.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Is there any other questions? I'd just like to make one little statement first, that, that I do agree that we need to do this because our dispatcher from the fire department, you know, they, we're losing them left and right. And I've seen it, we, we hire them, we train them, and yes, and like Ed said, that we're number 16 out of 16 cities around, which will bring us up to number 8. So, they won't be moving into one of the cities closest to us by doing this. If we train them, we'll be able to keep them. So, any other questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Currently, what step are most of these employees on?
So, currently with our dispatch unit, most, I'll have to check and I'll follow up with you, but most are not at the top step. Most are at step 3 or lower because they're relatively newer employees. That, that's, and that really speaks to the turnover rate in the dispatch unit and that we can't keep senior employees. They just don't last long enough to make, you know, step 4 or even step 5. And those that were at step 4 and step 5 have either retired or moved on to other organizations.
Well, we also need to take into account the cost isn't just the 2% on step 3 because they will start moving up the steps and therefore become more expensive. I don't know at this point that the city can afford raises. With that, though, is that they are agreeing to pay more for their purse contributions and the cap to their medical. So, that makes it a little bit more palatable. But there has to be some discussion at some point before something like this comes before us again. Where are our numbers? I mean, I, I hear that we're going to have to take it into account next year. I mean, why isn't there some thought of we are going to give this percentage and a raise? It may adjust depending on what we're able to negotiate, but why isn't that already known what the impact is for next year? If we can afford it next year? And so, I just hope moving forward that this changes because the city cannot afford to continue to give raises, and this has nothing to do with it being justified or not when we don't have the money. It's just that simple. And, you know, all of you who faced reelection in November were re-elected, saying, re-elected or elected, saying, "We're going to get on top of this." And so, I would reiterate to the public that this was not negotiated by us. This was not entered into by us. This is thrown on our laps as a done deal. And I can tell you that for the, at least two years I'm here, I do not want to see this again without our numbers in place and knowing how, if we can afford this moving forward. I, I'm willing to make the leap this time because of the purse contributions and capping the medical, because those are two huge expenses. But, you know, it just, I don't know, almost leaves me speechless on the fact that I can't honestly say we can afford this. Can we afford it next year? Can we afford it the year after? Because eventually, they're going to come asking for raises again. It's just the way it is, and they have every right to. And it is only fair that we pay what we can, and we don't know what we can. And there's going to be no trust with the unions if we can't look them in the eye and say, "You may want this, we can't afford it." And so, that's really all I have to say about this one.
Yeah, we have a motion, and I'll second that motion. Okay, now may I roll call, please?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. It passes 5-0. Okay, now we should go to item number 8, which is by Councilmember Castellanos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, let's see here. Okay, so on this, well, agenda, item number 8, I guess, it's a 7 here, but it's the budget amendment, kind of piggybacking on what Councilmember Shoemaker just said. Can we afford it? This is another illustration of unanticipated expenses that affect us severely. One question I had on the general liability section of the report, it says of particular note, city settled two high exposure tort claims against the police department, the total 192, and legal fees, $1,000, and $1.025 million in settlements. One thing I'd like to know is as much as possible, I know it's difficult to control, but what can we do, if anything, in the future to avoid things like this? Because it's just going to keep beating at us and making us implode. Another question I've got is about the civilian service vehicle. I understand how police vehicle would get totaled in a high-speed chase, but about the civilian vehicle, want to know what happened there. And then in the park maintenance section, it says the need for this project was unknown to staff at the beginning of the fiscal year, and it added 6,000 unanticipated expenditures to the city's parking landscape. How, how was that unknown? Was it just something that came up after the beginning of the fiscal year? And, let's see here. And then later it says 14,500. So, if I could get an explanation on the leap from 6 grand to 14,500, those are my questions on this report.
Sure. So, let's, let's start with the easy ones, which is the park maintenance and utilities. So, that we have full disclosure for the residents. So, what has happened is, is that suburban water came out and did an audit of our, our water system and found that the water meter here at City Hall was faulty. And so, what that means is for the last few years, our water bill was significantly less than it should have been. And so, now that they fixed the water meter, and now we're getting billed at the correct rate, it's going to be $60,000 more than what was budgeted for the last couple of years. Okay, so, the utilities, that one's, you know, I want to say we benefited the last few years, but moved... but moving forward, we're going to have that additional expenditure. Park maintenance, you know, to be honest, you could have budgeted for the seeding of the ball fields. However, I also think that there's, there has been in the past a working relationship with the league to help pay for that cost. So that they weren't able to do so, we went ahead and got that project done in order to have the project completed. Staff knows to look at that in the future about more partnerships with our leagues. A good example is we do have a relationship with the soccer program, which is helping reseed Orangewood Park. The wood chips, we are trying to not budget for it and think that, hey, we would try and get away with another year of the current wood chips. Unfortunately, when we did an audit of it, it's just because of the health and safety of people utilizing the park, we felt the best protection of our residents, the participants using it. It better just to fill the chips rather than have that liability of someone getting hurt at the park. So that was something that, again, could have been budgeted for in the budget. So that's about 20,500 in park maintenance that could have been budgeted, but we were trying to get, see if we can get away with not doing it. Boy, fleet maintenance, the police departments have been struggling a little bit this year. Some of it's been, you know, the fault of our officers or civilian employees. The other has been the bad people that we're chasing. Good example is if we have to do a pit remover to stop somebody who's in a pursuit, that's going to damage our vehicle. And so those costs have been pretty extensive this year. In addition, we've had it where we, our vehicles run into other vehicles. So we're not liable just to fix our vehicles, we're also liable for the vehicles that we do hit. Then on the reverse side, if anyone hits one of our personal vehicles, or not personal, but city vehicles, police or we go after their insurance to help reimburse. And so that does take time. Unfortunately, there's been a number of police pursuits this year, which has damaged police vehicles significantly. Or part of our, you know, the police department has perhaps not used their best judgment when driving. So the chief, Taylor, one of his, his goals this past year has been a lot more training and understanding of the impacts that this has on the city's budget. And so we actually have seen a decrease in incidents with the police department. But it still provides us, you know, a pretty significant amount of money of things that, to the point of $200,000 over that, that we're asking for uninsured losses. One of the residents spoke about, you know, why isn't our insurance picking up the cost for this? We're self-insured as a city. Many cities are as well. So we are on the hook for first million dollars in damage per incident. So if one of our police cars is in an accident today, costs $10,000 worth of damage that is unreimbursed, the city has to pay for that. If another vehicle the next day has that same incident, that's another $10,000 or so. That's why each incident, each lawsuit, the city has, is on the hook for up to $1 million. After that is when our insurance kicks in. Excuse me. In addition, on the fleet maintenance, if there's more specific questions, I can either refer to the police chief or Nicole, but that's just kind of the general terms. The big item on tonight's agenda is the budget amendment for general liability increases. So historically, and I think this is important, so people ask, okay, why is there such a huge discrepancy? Historically, this, the general liability fund has spent anywhere between $284,000 in one year to a high in '16, '17 of $1 million. And so we try to budget somewhere in between, hoping that, hey, we're not going to have as many lawsuits or general liability issues. General liability includes anytime we have a vehicle incident, certain types of lawsuits, trees falling and damaging vehicles that haven't been trimmed, and other issues as well. To date, we've already spent $1.6 million in that account. So we're asking for a little bit more than what was budgeted for on top of the appropriations tonight to not only resolve some issues that are pending, but to have us a little bit of money, hopefully get us through the rest of the year. As the council is aware, we've had a lot of high-profile lawsuits this year. And so I want to talk a little bit about what that does to the city's budget. Excuse me. I think the settlement that was publicly announced on the Velazquez case, that settlement was $550,000. That does not include $100,000 in legal expenses that are related to that case. The incident with Mr. Brightley, the case there for wrongful termination, to date, we spent around $180,000 in legal fees. That doesn't include the fact that that case is on appeal and we're going to be accruing additional legal fees moving forward. The city had to settle another case, a public records request case, if you all recall that, to the tune of about 100, and I think we got it knocked down to 170,000? 187,000 is what's been reported, and additional, you know, 17,000 in legal fees. It's not uncommon for cities to get sued, and you saw in the claims on there today, we get sued all the time for folks. Some folks run, I've seen it where someone's been drinking and driving, ran into one of our streetlights, and they sue us as a city because we have the dePockets to fix their cars. So we get sued for a variety of reasons, whether sometimes the city is at fault, other times we're not. So many other times on the agenda, the claims for damages, we're denying those. We had another police incident with, it's called the Miranda Colorado case, settlement of $475,000. We have the case this evening we've been talking about, which has got, spent a quarter million dollars in legal fees. So those alone, between those different cases, is almost $1.5 million in expenditures that the city has incurred this year. And those go back to the fact that these are unanticipated. You don't go into the year thinking you have these big lawsuits that the city is going to be paying for. We do budget, again, based on trends that we've seen historically, but this has been a bad year for the city. And the general liability accounts, we have no choice but to pay those. And this is actually trying to, actually, in essence, repay the city from the general fund, fund balance to the general liability accounts for monies that we've already expended based on the settlement authority or the legal fees on these different cases. So I know it's not a lot of good news, but I think it's important that the residents hear that and explain that this is some of the issues that we're having. And that we're trying to resolve them as best as possible.
So what about the civilian vehicle? What happened with the civilian vehicle?
Sure, I can answer that, Honorable Mayor, council and staff and community members. So we did have a civilian incident at Azusa and Amar. Both of the vehicles that were, are being replaced, actually, the accidents took place a couple of years ago. So that was actually at our driver's fault. And it's one of those things where, to be honest with you, our entire fleet is aging. If some of the council may remember us coming before you a couple of months ago using AQMD funds to replace a lot of the public works fleet, as well as one of the PD vehicles. And so we're constantly trying to get creative as our vehicle replacement fund has been depleted. We used that previously to buy a new command vehicle for fire. We currently have seven units that are over mileage for PD. So the maximum mileage that we should really be, the ideal mileage is 85,000. We have seven vehicles that are 130,000 miles right now. So it's one of those things where, you know, we don't want to come before you and have to replace vehicles, but when you get to critical mass, which is where we're at, that's what we have to do at this point in time.
Two years ago? And the service contract proposal amendment of 8,500, what is that for? Exhibit two, top line?
Yeah, the 8,500 is for the reseeding at Cortez Park.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think my issue with the city managers regarding, okay, the lawsuit, the settlement, okay, and I think this is so even before my time. So meaning the lawsuit is 2015, okay? And then, 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 okay, the results sooner or later should be, okay, my point is this, you kind of already should be know what's going on and what settlement will come up. So my point is, how can we not budget, okay, this thing, okay, this thing is kind of, is cooking and happening? So we know, and I remember last year, during the budget discussion, the special budget meeting, and I always say three things going to cost us a lot of money, why is it overtime? Why is consultant? And why is attorney? And the lawsuit, okay? And then that eats us a lot, okay? And the attorney fee, just the lawsuit and this and that, and plus the settlement and plus, and add on to the attorney fee, that's what the problem we have. And I understand, okay, a lot of time, we just have no choice. But the problem is, again, I feel like we become like ATM machine, okay? So like people just suing us and then, and now we have liability. And where's the accountability, okay, responsibility for the people? For example, the lawsuit, okay, for not only the police and fire and plus, how about our HR? So how can we control, we don't have this repetition, okay? And so you see, this is my first question, okay? How can we tie up our HR, okay, and make sure, okay, this thing regarding, okay, some kind of unlawful, okay, termination, okay, and some of, okay? Police thing is kind of difficult because we just have, okay, potentially, okay, that they have a lawyer better than our lawyer, this and that, and then force us to back down, to try to settle so it won't cost us more money. Okay, but that's what I say, and then we throw the money out of the window for taxpayers' money. This is my first question, is how we can foresee for future that we can kind of control all this unseen, okay, thing and go digging to our reserve? Okay, I don't want to say fund balance, I want to say reserve, okay? So then my next question would be, okay, now we're going to touch our reserve. So how much reserve we have, okay? And that's why I know go to number 17, agenda. Why is the reserve? Why is, okay, our fund balance, okay? Again, because, okay, somebody says 17%, you say 17% of reserve? Or my understanding of the reserve is we have like $50 million or $20 million that reserve that we don't touch, okay, and only for a certain time, okay, we have to touch, okay? And that for, right now, current situation, we need to spend $2.1 million on foreseeing, okay? And the spending, okay, and that is the problem we have every year. We just have going to potentially the deficit and that make everybody very worried and make it seem very difficult for us to make a decision. And it sound like, can we don't approve this, okay? Okay, and then stuck into our lab, that we have to approve, take it, okay, as this. But I don't know, what, any other way, okay, we can, okay, resolve this, okay, so-called, okay, budget, okay, deficit that create a problem, that's a lot of money we're talking about. We only like less than six months, okay, into the fiscal year. And we already have a $2.1 million deficit, okay? And we haven't got to June 30th, and then we're going to starting with the next year's fiscal year's budget. And now we already digging to our reserves. So maybe manager can explain to us, so how we, okay, taking care of the future budget and how we make sure we tie up the screw so we have, continue to have this issue?
Sure, so I know, I want to make sure it's clear, all of these expenditures have happened since July of 2018 to current. So they're within the current fiscal year. All the settlements that we, I brought up this evening are all settlements that have to be approved by city council. City manager does not have the authority on these settlements. Okay, now it doesn't mean that it's the current city council, it could have been previous city council, but the city councils will want to approve the settlements, not the city manager, I want to make sure that that's clear. All right, as far as the expenditure and on the attorneys and that, it's, again, it depends on if the direction of the council is, how far to fight these cases, whether it's to settle it. I hate to say it, anytime there's a lawsuit, there will be legal expenses associated with it. Some of these cases are still under investigation. One of them is an internal affairs investigation in the police department. There's other ones regarding a shooting incident with an officer. So there's some serious cases here that are still pending that we're trying to resolve here. But that's still, I can't go into detail because those impact employees and personnel issues and their confidentiality. As far as, you know, budgeting for the future, again, I can't remember when we've had these kind of payouts. So it's very, very difficult to do so.
The budget, okay, how about now, the reserve, okay? What, you have answered that?
Yeah, I think we can talk about that as part of the reserve discussion tonight because I think Marc should be better prepared for that one.
But to follow up on what you just said about the current cases, do we, are we budgeting for some sort of forecast on what worst-case scenario on our current cases?
No, so I'll refer to Edward. We budget and try to anticipate what we believe the legal expenses are going to be between now and the end of the year. And that's what this is hopefully going to provide us a little bit of breathing room for the next few, six months. But it's very possible we could be coming back to you at the end of the year and we have to add more money, depending if there's additional settlements or additional legal fees, depending on what kind of legal cases we have that go to trial or that incur with the city. I can't tell you that we're not going to have legal expenses moving forward.
Absolutely, and I could understand that. But yeah, let's, well, we could talk about it later, but try to, try to forecast those. Thank you.
Okay, you know, we could spend all night here playing kind of the blame game on what should a city staff known, why wasn't the council informed sooner? I mean, as the new person on the board, I could say that there was a council at the time who approved the budget, who approved every budget amendment, who didn't make the arguments that why aren't we budgeting more? And I can say that I know we've already given direction that we want to be part of the budget process sooner. And I hope that staff understands that this, well, we tried to estimate, you knew how many lawsuits you had. I'm sure you had some sort of number from the attorneys of where these cases could land. I could understand if a case comes up, was filed July 1st and miraculously is settled August 31st, that of course you didn't know that you were going to have that settlement. But, you know, part of the discussions need to be, hey, you knew you have these cases. You know, we have these upcoming cases. And we need to fix that structural problem. Because you know right now that there are other cases that could really impact this number. And I appreciate that you are looking ahead and asking for more money now. But based on what I now know, this isn't going to be enough. And so I hope as part of our budget presentations and budget discussions, there's a real discussion of how much money we need and where it needs to go. And I know Finance Department is new. And I know she's doing her best to get everything caught up. And I think we're just going to continue to go in circles until it is caught up. So maybe a discussion needs to be what we can do to get that department caught up, whether it's bringing in more staffing, temporary staffing, I don't know. But we cannot continue to have $2 million surprises. We just can't, we can't afford it, we can't do it. You know, I understand for unexpected, but I cannot believe that 2.1 million is unexpected. It's just mind-boggling to me. I mean, obviously, park maintenance is, I mean, was unexpected this year, but where's our plan for maintenance? That, so we know how much we're going to spend each year. Every other year, we're going to replace the wood chips. You know, the seeding for the grass project at Cortez Park. I mean, why didn't they pay what they used to? And was the football league that also uses the majority of Cortez Park, where were they in this? And so I'm looking forward to hopefully correcting some of this. Because the community doesn't, it doesn't look good for the council and it doesn't look good for staff when the community hears we need to do a budget amendment of 2.1 million dollars, you know, six months into the year. And we don't know what's going to happen in the next six months. So more work.
Well, you said most of the things I was going to say because we're only half the year. I mean, just look, it's frustrating. It gets people upset, it gets me upset, looking at this and then touching the general funds. And, you know, I don't know how far, well, one, estimating, the estimation is like far off. So are you estimating budget-wise and So are you estimating budget-wise and taking into consideration of everything else? And, you know, when I look at this, it's just, it's bending and a lot of lawsuits too, I can see, there's a lot that could have been prevented. So is it a management thing occurring from a top-down, training, lack of so forth? I mean, it's not, I just don't want another six months later, say, okay, another two million, or just, it, I, it, yeah, you just pretty much said exactly. And even here, I mean, to pass it, if I say no, I technically don't have a choice because these have to be paid. So it's not really a choice that I have. I'd like to see management do a better job in, you know, finding these, the fees or the working, just something, or even getting better deals, something on your end that just, I don't know, prevention, just everything. For, I know we haven't been getting our monthly that we've been requesting. We have an audit committee. I do want to see that grow. I do want to see the, a combined, like a budget audit and include the finance, so that they can have a better picture and they can even offer suggestions to make this or bring this number lower, so it's not such a big expense. Well, that's something that we can push forward. But it's just, it's just the frustration of seeing a big amount of money and we're talking about general reserves and spending. I just, I hate the word spending, you know, what are we getting out of it? Nothing. So that's all I have to say, but I have no choice. We have to like, yeah, I can't say no, so.
I just have one other comment. It's just a question I've always wondered why, and I guess it's not just our city, it's every city. When our police officers are on a pursuit of someone that broke the law and it's their vehicle and they cause an accident, why isn't their insurance on the hook for paying for our police cars?
So first of all, you have to assume they have insurance. If they do, and we do seek damages, even when they go to court, they may have restitution. But some of these guys, if they go to jail, they're not going to be paying restitution. But those that do, we do seek those damages and the court will award those to us. But again, here's the expenditures and then we go seeking those monies, but we may not see those numbers, unfortunately.
Well, I'm just saying, it's their insurance companies, they have, if they do have automobile insurance, why do you have to go to court on it?
Correct. They still do an appropriation. And then as revenues come in in the future, when we go seek those, those will be adjusted as well and part of the budget amendments as well. So as money comes in, that actually gets recorded in the HR department. But what we're saying is that this department only has the authority based on the budget to expend X, okay? Regardless that they have more money coming in from these other sources, there could be offsetting revenues for some of this. Not for the settlements, but for like some of the police officer vehicle damages, okay? And those will be a future budget amendments as revenues come in, and we'll update those as part of the different reports. But the expenditures, we have to come back to you, the authorization, to exceed what you've budgeted for in your fiscal budget.
Just one thing I forgot to mention. The community, while not pleased by the amount of the budget amendment, was really pleased and expressed to me that it was really broken down so they could understand where it was. And it wasn't just a general number, that there was an explanation of where these numbers are coming from. I think, I don't know if it's a discussion that you have with the council or in public, probably not. But I think there needs to be an understanding, at least on my side. I know what some of these cases were settled for, not just the numbers, but why the city was forced to settle. And some people know because of newspaper articles. And so I think there needs to either be a discussion or just an acknowledgement that there is work being done to correct, in some cases, the culture that allowed conduct that led to a settlement, that it is something recognized and there is something being done about it. And I'm not talking about a car that needs a tire replaced, I'm talking about the lawsuits.
No, I appreciate that, and there's a lot of validity to that. Some of these did start years ago and with previous regimes, previous leadership, the different departments. And I think there's a lot of validity to what you says, as, you know, we try to, we've already changed to training policies in the police department because of a lot of these. And we're still waiting for results from other agencies regarding some of these settlements too, because we depend on those results to figure out what we do moving forward too.
And I still go back to the original, my question regarding the accountability and the responsibility regarding all this, all so many lawsuits just flooded to us, okay? And how we can, okay, prevent, okay, and from the HR, okay, department, that maybe the training, maybe the policy that we have looking to it, okay, to make sure, okay? It happens, happen, okay? And this cost is cost, okay? The damage, damage, okay? And the bill we have to pay, that is there, okay? It's just, okay, very, very difficult, okay, to swallow just the six months, then we got this deficit. And then my worry would be more about the future, okay? How can we, okay, from the HR, how can we use this as experience, okay? And the example, like in the future, how we do the policy, try to avoid as much as we can, okay? For example, you want to terminate people, you need document, okay? And make sure, okay, we have a, okay, good case, okay? And unlawful terminations, for nine, these three years, it's more than one, there's a couple of them, okay, including, okay, our city, okay, it's not in the police, in our city staff, same problem too, okay? And we have to pay the settlement and it's very difficult to swallow. And so who and when and what, okay, create this, 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 okay, unlawful termination, okay? So the accountability has to be there. So somebody doing that, and the person, the person should be either, okay, reduce the pay or termination, okay, legally, okay? So in that way, people won't do anything to continue to damage, okay, the city and then we, the taxpayer have to pay. I think this is, this is what we want to do, okay, the discussion over here. Speaking to this discussion, right now, it's useless, it's already happened. It's a two point one million dollar, you have to pay. But the point is, how can we in the future to avoid this, we could again and again, okay? So I really don't want to, okay, a couple of months later, then you have something coming up to us, okay? And hopefully use this as, we need to kind of tie up, again, 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 to how to use our HR policy to make sure, okay, each department follow that policy. So we don't have, become ATM machine and then we, right now, we just don't have the income to pay all those unfound, surprise, okay, and thing. So do you have any suggestion or maybe add, you have any add-on, so you can help us to hopefully in the future, we can avoid some kind of, do you have any policy the HR department can do?
Before Edward ends, I know that the city attorney's office has been involved.
Hold on, really quick. No, because specific departments are being called out at this point and I'm getting a little bit uncomfortable with personnel issues.
Yes.
And so that's why I'm interrupting.
It needs to be more general and, yeah.
Correct, in public, otherwise this is a discussion for closed session.
Yeah. Well, no, I think that, and I think globally what we're doing, some of these employees are no longer with the organization, that we have these lingering lawsuits. And then we do have several new policies and programs and training that have already been implemented.
Can you give a general description?
Yeah, no, I prefer to keep it global like that, as the council member mentioned. And I also think it's important to note that, you know, there is appropriate discipline issued as well. And so if someone is involved in an incident with a city vehicle, there's a process that they go through where they can be disciplined as well, depending if they're at fault or not at fault.
I more talk about unlawful termination from the HR, okay, what kind of policy you have?
So, Mr. Councilman and Council, currently, we are undergoing a cultural transformation in this organization. And one of the objectives, as I've been called upon and we have been working on as a team, is to emphasize effective performance management. And it's easier said than done. The performance management does start with management and with management competently managing employee success. And part of that is evaluating employees on a regular basis, providing employees with the training and development opportunities that they need to be successful and effective employees, and also holding employees accountable and having those administrative policies and procedures in place that actually speak to the needs and demands of the organization today, not twenty or thirty years ago. And so part of the transformation is really incorporating better performance management, updating our personnel policies and procedures, updating our MOUs, and really transforming the culture of this organization so that we do not have instances of this nature. And if I may just kind of briefly elaborate on one of the claims, because you are absolutely right, it makes no one here happy. I mean, it's given me a lot of sleepless nights, a few of these claims in particular. But one claim in particular, the Velazquez one and the settlement, you know, that really did come out of nowhere. And all, our assessment of that claim in the beginning was that we didn't think there was any merit to it. And when we looked at the facts from the, on the surface, there was not a lot of merit to it. Unfortunately, as we did more investigation and as we deposed more employees and individuals that were part of that incident, more facts started to reveal themselves that showed the city had a significant amount of exposure. We did not anticipate that. We went into it, the initial analysis was that we felt we had the high ground and that we did not have a lot of exposure. Unfortunately, as we investigated it further, as we investigated it further, it just more exposure.
So I just want to encourage the council that we stay within the topic. The question is, should we approve the budget amendment?
Yeah.
You know, I was, I was going to say, we're getting out of the scope of what it is. But I think what we need to do is move on with this one, okay? Knowing that we talked about, you know, reluctantly, I'd like to make a motion to accept the item tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, we have a call.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Can I say no?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
And like I say, reluctantly, I'll say aye. Pass this final. Okay, now we shall move, that's the end of our consent calendar. And next is item number ten, which is the ring residential rebate program. Who shall give the, we already did nine. That'll come along. That should be, where am I? Let me see.
Do I speak?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's now, actually, she's correct.
She is right. It's all about, yeah, she is right. You're right. I lost my agenda, you're right.
Oh, just because we have, it's mandatory to mention it. So for the AB twelve thirty-four, we attended the New Mayor and Council Members Academy with the League of California Cities. It was a long three-day session, got some good information, met other councils, and we fulfilled the two mandatory required class harassment and ethics. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, it was actually really informative, nonstop, but well-organized and I think we all got a lot out of it and did some good networking with other local council members, so it was a good trip. Thank you.
I forgot to turn my mic off. I too, I was there, and you know what? It was very informative, even though I was, I was at one three years ago, but this time it was also for new mayors. But I think it was a lot of good information. I think I learned more on this one than I did three years ago, and it was very informative. And I think it was, I think all three of us came a lot with a lot more knowledge of how things of procedures are supposed to be ran. So I think we're going to take some of that that we learned during the future, that will help us as we move forward. Okay, moving from there. You were very correct. Okay, now, if I'm correct, we're going to go to item number ten, which is the ring residential rebate program. This is one that Councilwoman Lopez brought forward.
Thank you for the staff report and getting the full detail information and seeing how other cities do it. And unfortunately, I was kind of bummed to see that CDBG doesn't cover this. I was hoping it did, but I don't want to eliminate this, but because of the budget financial issues, I'd like to just suspend this until we have funding or people donate or anything, until there's money. So just to suspend for now.
Okay, you just want to receive a file for now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Seeing as receiving file, we shall move now to item number eleven, which is a purchasing policy requested by Councilman Castellanos.
Thank you. Well, it's a long report, I appreciate it. I mean, we, just kind of going along with everything we've talked about financially earlier today, solid purchasing policy helps us contain our costs and we need to be leaving no stone unturned to see where we could save some money. So thank you for the report and thank you for providing it for us to see and for the residents to see. And I don't have any questions on it.
I have a question. I do ordering in my city all the time. Now, the purchase order of two thousand five hundred or less, it says no quotes required. Is this only if you have a contracted vendor or is this generally speaking? Because I do have a concern on that.
Our purchasing manager, Mark Baxter, he can help answer those questions.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Yes, that is, anything under twenty-five hundred dollars does not require quotes, does not require a PO, staff can purchase as they need.
Well, that actually concerns me then, because two thousand five hundred, if you spend that multiple times, I mean, it can add up. Is this something that we could look into? I mean, and the reason why I'm saying this just based on how we purchase as well. So we do have that two thousand five hundred limit if they are like contracted vendors, but if it's for something else or anything, then we, it's a five hundred or less, or a thousand, that needs three bids. But what kind of, I guess, the items, so this is just generally for anything then?
Yes, general for anything that's under twenty-five hundred dollars.
Let's clarify, so if, again, going back to, you know, ongoing vendors that we have, that is included. So we have to order stuff from Office Depot that's under twenty-five hundred dollars, it goes right into our account, and the employees have the authority to go ahead and purchase that. Anything above twenty-five hundred dollars, they have to get the quotes to purchase it. One of the reasons they extended it, was that one thousand at one point? We went back, looked at purchasing practices of other cities, and we found that cities are a little more flexible, even greater than twenty-five hundred dollars. But we felt comfortable at twenty-five hundred dollars because it also made it a little bit more efficient for purchasing things. So if you have an item, let's say that's fifteen hundred dollars, and we had a purchase threshold of a thousand, there's a lot more work or time consumed to get something that you really weren't saving any money based on all the time you're spending, get all the different quotes, put the purchase order together and things like that.
So as for the approvals, how many, how many approvals are there in, oh, wait, it's a department, oh, never mind, I see that, never mind, thank you.
I had a question also, and I was concerned about this. I had spoke to the city manager about it, which, on the next one, it said purchases twenty-five hundred to twenty thousand with pre-written quotes, so approved by department heads. But then the city manager steps in and it goes from twenty thousand above. So my question is, if a department head can spend up to twenty thousand dollars without the city manager's approval of it, then I, I have a little concern on that. Why?
Well, that would, now, if we were to change the current policy, that's the way it's been. I've been here for three and a half years, so it's been that way for a considerable amount of time, that department heads had the ability to spend up to twenty thousand dollars. And then anything over twenty thousand dollars, not only tires a department head, but also then would follow to the city manager to sign off on that.
So my other question is, if they don't spend up to twenty thousand dollars, does the city manager still have to sign, even though they can spend it? Shouldn't it go through him? If I come up to him and say, your department spent twelve thousand... If I come up to him and say, your department spent $12,000 on this, what was it for? Where did I come up with the answer?
Sure, so everyone has to stay, first of all, the important thing is they have to stay within their budget. Okay? And so there's a variety of items that have been budgeted over the course of the year that's been approved, and this is part of that process as well. So initially, let's talk about that in June or July, it's approved for expenditure over the year, what they're going to spend. If they're going to spend up to $20,000 under their threshold, it still goes through a purchasing product, a process that the purchasing manager and finance oversees. It's not uncommon for Mark to come over to me and just make sure that items are being processed in accordance, because there's, there's multiple checks. That was an important thing about the state audit that was done a few years ago, is that to make sure we had the right proper policies in place, procedures, and checks and balances. And so now that we have that, it was those thresholds we felt comfortable with. And so the $20,000 threshold is, you know, for local government, it's actually in many cities, much higher. Some cities have a threshold where the city manager can spend up to $100,000 without city council approval. Now, mind you, I'm not asking for requesting that. I don't like that idea. I think that the threshold that we have now is plenty for the city manager's threshold.
And when you say 20,000, okay, department head, okay, when you say 20,000, annually 20,000 or every time, when they have something, they spend up to 20,000 for that purchase?
It could be for that purchase, let's say they go and buy a used police, or a used car for the police department. That's an example.
So basically, they can do it 10 times for $20,000?
That's correct.
Okay, so the, so in that way, so we have no control about, okay, how they spend these 20,000 multiple time, including the $2,500 of a limit, they can spend multiple time, okay? So they can spend small amount, okay, so we don't have a chance to understand, okay, what, okay, this spending is about. My point is very simple, just, we don't want to waste, okay, due to our current budget issue. So sound like you're buying LED, okay, LED TV or something, okay, in some kind of committee room set aside and didn't do anything and because, and maybe we don't need it, but you waste the money, it's right over there. So, so, so how can we, okay, understand this is, okay, the reasonable purchase, okay, since we have no say on this 20,000, okay, per anytime?
Right. I don't think the city council wants to get involved in purchases under, you know, a certain threshold, because then you're going to delay a lot of operations and you're going to be micromanaging the different departments.
No, no, no. It's not what my point is, I want to control the 20,000, it's, again, it's a budget issue.
It is.
Okay, it's a budget issue. Currently, we have a budget become like a deficit. So in that way, we want to control, okay, this spending, okay? And the small spending, 2,500, but you add together, okay, multiple time, that's quite a lot of money. And the 20,000, okay, per purchase, so that you have no idea. And they, okay, and then that's what, that's why I'm always confused, why we have a much of a deficit, okay, this is not so possible, the city manager or our finance department, okay, have to control about what approve for them. You guys have to approve, right? You guys have to approve, okay? Am I right? You guys?
Yes. Can I just say something? The, the department has a budget. In, within our software, we set up a protection for the city that they cannot spend over their budget. So by division. So if they have an aggregate budget of $100,000, they cannot go over that $100,000 regardless of what they buy, even if they buy $20,000 at a time. The system will stop any more requisitions going into the system to be converted into POs. And also, it stops us from paying any invoices if they've tried to go over their budget. And when that happens, then it's my responsibility, I discuss that with our finance director and with the city manager, and then they need to do a budget amendment or they need to alter what they're purchasing because they've exceeded their budget. So our software stops them from enter, entering in more than what their budget, approved budget was.
So my final question would be, so all this spending, no matter the, the, okay, head of department, okay, or each person, they, okay, you're talking about 2,500 or 20,000 dollars, everything would be altered? Am I right? Okay, so, so everything, okay, it will be, okay, to be ordered. At the same time, if our audit committee want to, okay, pull this thing out, they can, you guys will provide all this information and number, okay, to our, our committee or the auditor?
And with every requisition order that they sent into finance, that also sends in a remaining budget amount. So prior to anything even being approved, I verify that there is money in that account and it won't go any further. And that's, a piece of paper is documented and stays with the file for that purchase order. So if the auditors would pull that file, they'd be able to see that the time that that order was entered, there was budget for it.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add real quick, there's another point I think is important, and that is credit card use. That's all, that's an issue that some cities get in trouble with. And so I want to make sure that as we talk about purchasing, we understand that includes credit card use, that the auditors actually last year as part of the audit, went through every credit card transaction to make sure, because that's something that, you know, staff has wanted, and I know the audit committee members asked for that as well, because we want to be able to make sure that the, everyone feels comfortable on those, because unfortunately, that has been a source of abuse with cities in the, in the past. And it's another reason, not, no offense to you guys, but it's another reason that, you know, the League of California Cities and other cities recommend council members do not have city-issued credit cards, just to better protect all of you too.
Okay, seeing all the questions, I'd like to make a motion to accept item number 11.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. We'll call.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. It passes five zero. Next item is item number 12, evaluating moving from a seven-year to a five-year tree trimming cycle for the citywide tree trimming. This is Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Yeah, I've been champion talking about the tree issue for three years. Okay, I know a lot of people, okay, say, Tony, you're the tree guy, okay? So because I see so many tree issue, and I experienced so many tree collapse and created damage and people get hurt. And if we, okay, just like your, okay, breakdown, okay, most of cities, four years, five years, three years, and we are the longest, we're seven years. And when, when the tree, seven years, never been trained, and I see some of the area like this tree four, this tree five, and the tree look like never been touched for like forever. They're like a jungle. So, so, and that's create two issue, like one issue is a fire hazard, okay? And second issue is the tree, when it tops so heavy, and during the, this rain, this and that, I see the Cortez Park, they have a big tree collapse, okay? And then luckily, it didn't hurt anybody or damage something, but just for the city to, to have emergency, have a tree trimming company to remove, it costs us a lot of money. So if we can, okay, and at least treat it five years, okay, and, and to make sure all those tree, and especially overgrown tree, okay, and we can reduce a lot of all this extra, okay, money we have to spend. And plus, okay, and make sure we don't have a potential hazardous situation. But I understand that, again, it's a budget issue, okay? So, so maybe, okay, I think we talked about this, we can use, okay, other way to make sure we can go to five years, okay, to make sure all the tree, okay? And when I was talking to so many residents, their major concern still the tree issue, there's all the tree, like in their backyard in the city property, and tree is so huge and that the leaves and branching going to their roof. So this is really a potential issue. So anyway, so maybe you can tell me, okay, what's the, the city, okay, the city can see what we can move from seven years to, to five years, or even shorter, okay, if we don't, if we have a budget?
Sure. So staff's recommendation would be to do that moving forward with the fiscal year 1920 budget. So we already have an amendment in place that already lets us go to the five years, because that's actually what council elected to do with West Coast Arbor's. And Nicolago is here from West Coast Arbor's, if there's any additional questions beyond what, what staff may be able to answer. Just to give you an idea, so, you know, beyond the budget, the increased budget amount for the contract, I think that it's fiscally prudent from a risk management standpoint to move to a five-year trim cycle. So just to give you a snapshot in time, in the month of January, we had 12 trees that were downed. And out of those 12 trees, there were two that were actually noted as, one of them was dead and needed to be removed, and the other one was recommended for removal, right? So every other tree was actually in good condition. So it just so happens, though, that one of the issues is that, as you spoke, Cortez Park, that tree was last pruned on May 23, 2011. So that's, you know, seven and a half plus years ago, that that's the last time that particular tree was pruned. That's a problem, and when you're looking at the 12 trees that I have in front of me, you know, some of them were 10, 13 years, and then all of a sudden, every single year, but it wasn't regular grid pruning, they were service request calls. So they were resident complaints, council or staff noticed it was a problem, maybe West Coast Arbor's was out for a different call and noticed there was another issue. So those were not regular scheduled trees, they were, again, a reactionary response. So I think that needs to be, in staff's opinion, and I'm, I'm sure Nick would share the same sentiments, that especially with the tree removal or the tree trimming program, we need to make sure that we are not reactionary and that we have a stable program that is consistent with the five years. Currently, we are on that seven-year trim cycle, and anything we have additional, they're addressing some bigger trees that we have issues. We've identified a handful of trees in town that need to be removed, that were backlogged, that maybe were overgrown, marked for removal, diseased, dying, et cetera, that are focused on trees that are bigger and in the right of way that could cause damage to property or life. And, yeah, we really are lucky that the tree that fell this weekend at Cortez didn't hurt anybody. And we definitely don't want to have what has happened in other cities where somebody has actually lost their life. We did have a tree fall that we had an irrigation line bust, I believe it was a couple of years ago at Cameron Park, and actually fell on one of our instructor's cars with her in it. And luckily, there was minimal, well, there was a lot of damage done to her car, but luckily she was okay and walked away from that. So we have had a couple of instances where, from a risk management perspective, it would be a better practice to move to the five-year trim cycle.
So maybe we should have a West Coast to say, we give us some presentation about the five years. I put Paul in, put him on the spot. Hey, you show up, he can talk, right? Here, then you can talk.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and what's left of the residents. As Nicole was saying, most cities are on about a five-year trim cycle, that's appropriate. We don't recommend any longer than that for the reasons that Nicole stated. One of the other things that is important, and I don't know if you've run across this on the insurance requirements, a lot of these cities now are requiring inspection of the trees some annually, and we're trying to work with those to not make it as stringent as annually. But how we do it is, within the grid program, we also give you a level-one tree risk assessment. So if we're going through that every five years, those trees are getting inspected and any issues are being reported to staff and updating the inventory on what needs to be done to the tree. If you wait seven years, it's much too long, and then you run into those liability issues. Again, seven years really doesn't work, it doesn't really solve your problems that you're having. Five years is probably the most. Some cities, as I reported to staff, are on three and four, and they virtually have no, hardly any incidents, and their customer service is really high, the residents are happy with them because their, their trees are being touched more frequently. So I think that's about all that I can add to.
Yeah, I remember, okay, we, we have this issue, okay, we back and forth with the previous city council, and I always try to say we need to have, okay, five years or shorter due to, okay, I see, I saw it in my eye, okay, all the city, the major problem, Temple City, San Marino, Acadia, also tree, they don't treat, okay? And then they get a major problem, the power line collapsed, this and that, due to the wind five years ago. So, so, but, okay, here, the budget issue. So in that way, I, I strongly want the five years, but I want to make sure we can afford it, okay? And the thing is, is now we had to take care of the 12 fallen tree, okay? And for that, if we, you're doing five years, will it be cheaper, whether then you have to come out to take care of those, those four tree?
Absolutely. Well, let's just take one claim. If you let that tree go for seven years and a tree falls right to the city manager's issue and you get a lawsuit against the city and you're paying out a million dollars in a claim, you know, that, those are the kind of things that you're going to reduce drastically. Many years ago, and I use this as my model city, the city of Ontario was having that, the same issue. They weren't budgeting and they were just reacting to service requests. Well, they went to a grid program and they've been documenting how much money that grid program has saved them over the years, and they've come to the conclusion that whenever there's any budget cuts that needs to be done, they pretty much leave the tree budget intact, because they see how much money that's been saved with them. And I've encouraged staff to reach out to the city of Ontario and give them that information and documentation. I've talked to the staff members over there to help other cities with that information.
So the question would be, okay, when they have four tree, when you call, we call you and you show up to, to make sure we move those tree, is that extra charge to the city or less included?
No, that, yes, that's an emergency call out, which is, yes, much more expensive.
Much more expensive. Okay, so if we have 12 trees, okay, so meaning we have the 12 extra, okay, cost to the city to, to, to remove those tree, okay, when, when those trees like in the ground and this and that, am I right? So, so the council we have to you, with you for seven years cycle, meaning we just, we pay you for that, okay, that, okay, amount of money, so for you to treat the tree every seven years for each of tree. But now, okay, hopefully, with shorter the time, five years, so we have, we will have a less, okay, tree that, that will be collapsed and become a issue for the city?
Yes, you'll have less, less limb failures, less incidents. The more frequently you prune a tree, you're going to reduce those kind of incidents significantly.
Okay, thank you.
Can you tell me when the tree at Cortez was trimmed again, the date? I believe you said May 2011?
May 2011, that's correct.
So we're outside of the contracted schedule of seven years?
That's because we just started doing a seven-year trim cycle last year, but before, or 2017, but before that, it was sporadic. So I have trees that were three, four, five, 13, every year, two year. I mean, it's all over the map.
Can we look at when this one was supposed to be trimmed? Just as a matter of course. And then also, I know you're not going to have it tonight, and I didn't think that this would be a question. Can we have the information on how much trees cost us a year in liability versus the contract increase to go to the five years?
Yeah, we can pull the list of this past year's claims, sure.
Not this past year, but historically, because when it comes to assessing over the lifespan, we need a couple of more years than that.
Yeah, we'll dive into the data.
Yeah, thank you.
How, how many years are left on our current contract?
Sounds like it's, Ms. Percy answered until 2021.
I think it's 2022.
22?
Yeah, 17 to 22, five-year contract.
There's a question for West Coast Arbor's. If, if we were to extend a five-year contract, would you be able to keep the price the same at 413 for those five years?
Probably not. At the end of the five years, we would probably, I mean, we're always open to negotiate with the city to come up with a, an agreement that's acceptable to both of us. But as you know, the prevailing wages are going up and the cost of doing business continues to go up. I, I believe we offered the city, when we came to them, on the last contract, there was a prevailing wage issue of a 30% increase in order to make us whole. And we offered the city to phase that in at 10% over a period of three years and then lock in that price for the remaining of the contract, and I think that's where we're at now. But that's like five-year-old prices. And so going forward, yes, we are open to, to negotiate with the city with maybe slight increases that would help us make with maybe slight increases that would help us make our, or help us with our production costs and our operating costs, so, but...
So there's some room to look at that?
Yeah, there's room to look at.
Okay, well, that's positive?
Yeah.
Okay, good, well, thank you, I'd love to make that happen.
Nick, can you explain to people the 30% increase? I don't want people to think that the council approved a 30% increase voluntarily.
What happened here about three years ago is the state of California mandated a prevailing wage, and so that increased our whole industry as far as what we had to pay our employees. And it was about a 30% increase to cover that mandating, that mandated wage. So we went to all of our cities and negotiated with them what would be a good solution to be able to continue with the contract and make it affordable to the city and also profitable for our company. So each city was different, with the City of West Covina, we knew that they were having budget challenges, and so we were willing to help, and we, instead of asking for the whole 30% and force, or forcing the contract to go out to bid, and so we had offered, we would phase in that 30% in a period of three years at 10% per year, and then lock in that final price for the remaining of the contract, and so that's where we're at here. I think Nicole said we got two more years, three more years? Yeah, so, so that's where we're at. But at the end of the contract, yeah, we'll always start a dialogue towards the end to see if we can negotiate with the city with slight increases to help us with our operation, our operation costs. If the city's not agreeable to that, then there's always other options, there's piggyback options with other cities, and then there's also, you know, go out to RFP also, so those options will always be there for the city.
And if I can remind council, this contract was a piggyback contract, so I want to make sure that those who are newer understand that we just did, it's not that we just didn't go out to bid, we did piggyback the contract.
Currently, I guess this is for staff, or, you know, are you, the current trees that we have right now, are the older trees getting taken care of? I mean, currently, is there a tree out there that's over 10 years old that just haven't, I mean, over 10 years that hasn't been touched, or, I mean, are we up to date currently with the tree trim, I mean, tree trimming?
Sure, so we are currently on the seven-year cycle to trim trees, so citywide, we're doing that. Landscape maintenance districts are different, because that's based on what the budget constraints are, and each district has a different assessment value, and depending upon where the trees are, the cost is different. So there could be a cost of, a tree on a hillside is different than a cost of a tree just in, you know, a flat area. The, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, can you clarify?
I want to make sure that the oldest trees that are out there are, to prevent any liability.
Correct, so what we did when the Public Services merged with Public Works Maintenance and Community Services in October, we met as a team and discussed how we were going to address some issues from a customer service standpoint, and addressing the trees that were more at risk. And that's where we talked about addressing the large trees that were overgrown in the right of way that posed safety hazards, so we were going to triage those first, which implies that they're older as they're bigger trees. And I think Mr. Cressip had something to add to that.
I just wanted to answer the question, as far as the seven-year cycle, it's systematically done, so it's, you know, it goes into a grid, and every year, a grid's done, so we're not looking at the trees and saying, okay, these trees are the oldest, and we're going over here. Obviously, we systematically pick the best grid to start with, but it just goes systematically that way, and in seven years, so there are some trees that will be 10 years old, and there is a chance that the tree in the seventh, you know, the seventh grid won't be done for, you know, 10 years, 12 years, whatever that case is, but we did try to pick the best place, the highest risk and start there.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we have a motion?
Okay, I want to move the motion to approve from seven years to five years.
And I'll second the motion. So we have a motion and a second, let's have a vote call.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viatto?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
No, not because I don't want to move down to five years, but we've been discussing the budget all night, and we don't know if the amount of money that the contract is going up is justified by our liability, or where our budget is for next year to budget for the increase.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
You know, I was going to vote, basically, on the ideas that we don't have a clue what our budget is yet, so I was, I'm not to go along with Councilwoman Shoemaker and vote no, but it still passes 3 to 2. Okay, now. You can move it, that's okay, now we're on item number 13, general fund balance reserve policy, and I think this was also Mayor Protem Wu's item.
Which one?
General Fund Balance Reserve Policy.
Marsha's here to make a presentation, if you'd like her to do so.
Yes, Marsha, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. To start the Fund Balance Reserve Policy, I would like to start with some terminology. Fund balance is a unique governmental fund term, it's the difference between assets and liabilities, and it represents the current net available resources that are available for future spending. Something that's also different to governmental funds is the basis of accounting. For governmental funds, we use modified accrual, which is based on the current financial resources measurement focus, unlike business, businesses which use accrued basis of accounting, accrual basis of accounting, and, which is based on the economic resources measurement focus. Here I have a graph that shows, sorry, here it goes, excuse me, here you have the structure for the basic financial statements, so on the left, you have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, and on the right, you have the balance sheet. On the left, going back to the left, we have revenues minus expenditures equals a change in a fund balance. These are temporary accounts that are closed out on an annual basis, so the change in fund balance is closed out to fund balance at year-end. On the balance sheet, we have the assets minus liabilities equals your fund balance, and these are your permanent accounts, which means they roll over from year to year. Within fund balance, we have five categories, which is non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. The subject of tonight's report is on unassigned fund balance, where is where the reserve The city's current unassigned fund balance reserve policy is to have at least 17% of the general fund operating expenditures. In June 2018, this minimum was decreased from 20% to 17%. At 17%, it provides for two months of expenditures, which is the minimum recommended by GFPA, minimum of two months' worth of expenditures per Governmental Finance Officers Association Here, you've seen this chart before, this was part of our adopted budget, which provides for beginning estimated fund balance of 5.9 million, and with budgeted revenues and expenditures for the current year, to end up at 16 million, with unassigned fund balance at 11.1 million, which is 17%, which meets our minimum requirement for fund balance. Here you see the same slide with the beginning estimated fund balance per the budget, 15.5 million, except this is reflective of the first quarter revenues and expenditures, or actually cash receipts and disbursements, which had a net expenditures were over revenues received in the first quarter by 16.8 million. So that will provide for estimated ending fund balance of, at September 30th, 1.2 million. With unassigned, it's a negative 6.1 million.
It was negative 1.2.
This is the same slide, but it looks much nicer, because we now have revised beginning fund balance based on our draft financials, so ending June 30th to 2018. So we have a beginning revised estimated fund balance of 21.9 million. Same numbers from the first quarter, cash receipts and disbursements, so we have an estimated September 30th fund balance of 5 million to deposit at this time, with unassigned still being negative 4.8 million. This slide here is to reflect the amendment that was on the council agenda for tonight. So we are starting also with a revised projected fund balance of 21.9 million, with budgeted revenues and expenditures, including the amendment, so we are estimating an ending fund balance at year-end at 20.2 million, with unassigned at 10.3 million, which is at 15% of expenditures. Going back to the current unassigned fund balance reserve policy, it's currently at 17% at 11.1 million. If the city consider a lower reserve at 10%, that would be 6.5 million, and at 25%, you would be bringing in, if this looks number familiar, about 16, over 16 million, which is what we were down in the first quarter. Again, the 17% of current fund balance reserve, unassigned reserve policy provides for two months of expenditures, which is the minimum as recommended by GFPA. That concludes my presentations.
Okay, and I think, okay, the confusion is coming from, okay, the 17%, okay, and the fund balance and reserve, okay, my understanding, the reserve is the money we have, okay, and we, basically, we don't touch, and your fund balance, more like you have expenditure and you have income, then you come out the fund balance, okay, and then you add 17%, so you need to have a 17% of the reserve, okay, and this what, as, like, last time, okay, with the budget, okay, we, okay, we budget the expenditure and the budget plus 17%, but that's why I'm confused, because why we need a budget, okay, okay, I'm talking about last year, when we, you're not here, we're talking to the Lancaster, okay, remember, every time we go budget, we plus 17%, that's what, okay, the problem coming from, okay, you reserve 17%, I have no problem, we should reserve maybe even more than 17%, we should reserve maybe 25%, okay, I don't want to reduce our reserve, but it's the difference between the reserve and the budget, okay, but based on, you got calculation is, you use the reserve, become like a cash flow, okay, you basically, you're touching the money, and then you're using the money as your operation, okay, fund, and then you need to add the money into, so you can, you can get some kind of fund balance coming out. So I don't know, is this a common practice, okay, to do something like this? My understanding, I talking to other city, they do not budget, okay, plus 17%, they budget the most, plus 5% of the difference, okay, and then nobody budget, like budgets, okay, you budget, okay, the money we're going to spend, and then you plus 17%, so I'm not trying to reduce our reserve to 10%, I'm trying to, okay, see how you budget, why you need to budget plus 17, okay, that is my question, okay, but I prefer, we have the budget always, okay, have 20%, so when the rainy day, we have the money to spend, okay, so that is the difference between, okay, what my understanding, and you try to explain to me, but why we need to budget plus 17%, because you are using, okay, the reserve, or you're using, okay, the money, okay, that basically is not set aside. So basically, you're spending the money, okay, you never reserve any money, you're just spending, and you need to, okay, put 17%, okay, extra, so to protect, so we have leftover money, am I right?
Let me try to explain again. If we go back to this graph, hopefully this helps me, here you have revenues minus expenditures is your change in fund balance. This is our budget here, we budget for revenues and expenditures, so when we budget, we want a budget to make sure we maintain 17% in unassigned fund balance, so we try to make sure that if our fund balance is at 17%, we want to keep it there. So if we have revenues minus expenditures that's equal each other, then the change in fund balance will be zero, and you're maintaining your fund balance at the proper, at the level that you try to keep it. However, if you're, if you are, if we're spending more than we're bringing in, we're going to have a negative change in fund balance deficit, which is going to reduce your fund So this is where we budget, we don't budget to, for fund balance reserve, but we budget accordingly to be able to maintain our fund balance at the proper level. So going back to the other slide.
I think what his question may be, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Wu, is we're supposed to have a 17% reserve. If we are dipping into that 17% reserve, how are you calling it reserve, because it's really part of our operating expenses? So he's asking, why is that 17% not touched, that it's in a box, period?
The reason for, we're not, we're spending from here, revenues and expenditures. The reserve is a target per our policy, we're not spending the reserve, that's why initially, when I prepare the first quarter report, I would do not want to...
But we are, we are, because we dip into it to cover operating until the revenue comes in.
Indirectly, we do, but what I mean is, that's why, it closes at year-end, it closes at year-end, so we...
I know, but that's the question, is that traditionally, for me, on a school board, when we have this reserve of the 2% to 3% we're required, it does not get touched, we don't use it for operating, knowing that more money's coming back into the pie, and so that's what Mr. Wu is trying to clarify, and I think the council, the rest of the council is agreeing with that at this moment, is why do we ever touch that 17%, and why are we calling it a reserve if we're touching it? Yes, at the end of the year, we'll meet our 17%, but there are times of the year where we do not have that 17%, so if something happened, we don't have in the bank the two, the two months of operating.
They use it as a cash flow.
Let me back up a little. We are not touching the reserve, we're touching cash flows up here, so we're really spending with, we budget on an annual basis, and we budget the reserve on an annual basis. We're spending based on, in accordance to budget... We're spending based on, in accordance to budget. Our cash flows are not dipping into reserves. It's the cash that we're moving. So that's why I did not want to, in the first quarter, I did not want to show that. I was showing still this picture, because we're still in accordance to budget. This is just cash flows. That's why we don't re-project the ending unassigned fund balance at year-end. This is not a typical slide I would provide. I just provided it for the sake of the request that was made at the prior presentation. So this is really cash flows. It's not dipping into your fund balance. That's why your, your reserve is not really changing throughout the year. It's at year-end that we look at your reserve. So according to, to the first quarter report, unless we had a budget amendment, we would not modify the reserve, because you have not increased your budgeted expenditures.
Well, and that's where you're missing. What, we know that at the end of the year, we're going to meet our 17% reserve. The concern that's being expressed is, for me and I think everybody sitting up here, when you say we have a reserve, let's change the word to savings account. Your savings account stays at that 17% number and doesn't get touched. That if you are using it to fund operations until more revenue comes in, you are spending underneath your 17%. And so the basic question is, why isn't it a savings account that isn't touched, period? Why don't we have that number always at the 17%?
The unassigned fund balance is not being touched throughout the year, because this is based on budget, budgeted revenues and expenditures. That cash flow is flowing in and out. It's not impacting your unassigned fund balance.
But the unassigned fund balance is not sitting at 17%.
It is, because we do not touch it until, it's, it's for the whole year.
I know it's for the whole year, but throughout the year, you are touching the unassigned to cover operating expenses till the revenue comes in.
No, the reason for, it's cash that's flowing. It's not the unassigned fund balance.
Can you go back to the first quarter?
However, that, that was the reason for not, not just showing those numbers of the first quarter, because that's really cash flows, it's not fund balance.
So you're saying that when you're showing us the first quarter that does not show unassigned at the level it should be? That, I mean, why wouldn't that number show what we, where we actually are total, not?
In, in reality, I was trying to stay away from showing the impact of fund balance. This is really cash flows. And our, our unassigned fund balance will only be changing if we change our budget and we agree to spend that money.
So where is our unassigned fund balance now? How much is it?
Our unassigned fund balance is the same as when it was budgeted.
So you're saying right now, it's 11 million dollars?
Unless we make a budget amendment, we changed our, our projected revenues and expenditures, then we're changing our fund balance total. So throughout the year, it's cash flows. And, and let me go back up to the unassigned fund balance reserve policy. The reason for that policy, according to GFOA, two months worth of cash flows is to provide, if we have targeted to, to keep a particular fund balance, that means we typically, we, we have enough to support the cash flows throughout the year, so there will be no cash flow issues. So if you policies not to have an unassigned fund balance that is very low, that means overall, you will not have sufficient cash flows to manage the operations on an annual basis.
So I'm still confused why on the first quarter number, you would show the lower amount. I understand the budgeted amount, but why wouldn't you show the full number that's in there, period?
I did not show it in my initial presentation. The only reason I showed it, because last time, city council seemed to want to see that cash flow. And I didn't not want to show our revised fund balance, because our, our fund balance is not really changing until we actually close at year-end. We're talking about cash flows.
And are we going to be at the 17%?
Unless the budget is amendment, according to the budget amendment we have, our revised... Oops, going the wrong way. According to this, our revised fund balance would be at 15%. But this is only taking into account that, that budget, large budget amendment for tonight. There might be other budget amendments. Also, when we come with the second quarter financial report, we'll be showing any revisions to the revenue proj, revenue budget, as well as appropriations. At that point in time, when you change the budget, that's when you would be changing your projected fund balance.
Okay.
You know, I, we do understand everything that you're discussing, but how, how you're presenting, it's really confusing, especially when you use the terminology, fund balance, reserve, so forth. I do consider a reserve as a saving, something that is separate, that's not touched. It's, it's there unless needed. Now, when you mix all of this, of course, we want to see numbers. I mean, that's what we're here for. I want to see facts, I want to see numbers. This is what we're looking for. But when you say all this and go all this round, you really are just confusing me, at least. I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm confused, and I'm pretty sure the residents are confused. But it, it doesn't make full sense. So, I, I, yeah, I just, you can clarify.
No, I, I agree with what we're all saying. Side question. When do we dip into this fund balance for cash flows as we're discussing? And when do we use our investments from Agenda Item 2 from earlier that we discussed? Sometimes we use those funds. When, how do we pick and choose?
Expendage, I'm sorry. Throughout the year, we're looking at revenues and expenditures based on budget. The cash flow is coming from our cash, which, it's our investments or as needed. If we don't have enough in our general checking account, we have to transfer money from our investments. So this is where it's happening. We have payments going through and cash flows moving throughout. But we really don't impact the fund balance unless we make a budget amendment.
In this diagram, where, where are our investments?
Our investments would be an asset. We should have cash investments.
So sometimes we take from there and sometimes we take from the fund balance?
No, we always take from cash. We always pay our bills with cash.
So how do we get to negative 1.2?
The reason, disregard, this is cash flows. Disregard the first quarter slide. I thought it would show the.
No, it does, but why, why in the world would we disregard that? When that's real, like that's real at a point in time.
It's cash flows, it's not your fund balance.
May I ask a question more fast? My question is, if I came to you every month, and I asked you what our reserve was, would you be able to tell me it's 17% no matter what? That's, that's, that's the bottom line. We always want to have 17% in our reserve. That's my question. I, I don't know about the, all that, I'm just ask that question.
It, it, it depends on if you have any budget amendments and so forth. And also, it depends, as you mentioned, this, a fund balance has several components. So if you have an item that changes from non-spendable and is available, then you will have a higher amount here. But yes, unless you make a budget amendment, it, it shall remain the same.
So every month, every month, it should be at 17% no matter what, unless we make an amendment?
Unless you make an amendment, or there's a shift from a, a non-spendable that is actually released and it's available for unassigned.
Okay, that's my question. I reset.
So, so you say we always have less 70% in the bank?
This is unassigned fund balance, which is our different, the cash.
You don't, you don't have to look at the graphic. You just tell him, just tell us, okay? Do we have less 70% every month, the reserve or our fund balance in the bank? Yes or no? Don't know.
Unassigned fund balance is not the same as your cash. It's like saying your cash is the same as your net worth. It's not the same thing.
If we didn't have, hold on one second. If we didn't have any more money come in, you say we always want to have enough to run our city for two months, correct? That's what the 17% does. Let's say, as of tonight, we never had another dime come in. Do we have enough to run the city for two months?
Yes.
So we, so we have our 17%.
Because you have a policy to have 2%. Unless you change, you amend your budget and so forth. For example, tonight you made an amendment, so then it would, we're estimated it's going to end up drop to 15% because of the amendment. I made it more confusing.
So, 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 no, we, we, we already approved, we have a deficit $2.1 million. So you're talking about that, that we don't have a 70%. I said beside that 2.1, do we have less 70%? Let, how much, $16 million or $11 million? How much is, is 70%? Okay, so we always have, we always have $11 million in the bank, always.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we all have the $11 million in the bank. Here today, we have to spend 2.1 deficit.
Correct.
Okay, clear. So this is, this is elementary, okay? You have $11 million, and then you spend, okay, 2.1, never budget. So we dip into our budget. Now, we less than 70%.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Now here the question that I have last time. So when we go to the budget coming up pretty soon. So we budget, okay, we, why we need a budget? You have expenditure and you have a budget spending, okay? The budget, why we need to budget? Since we already have that 11 million dollars or minus 2.1 million dollars in the bank all the time, why we need to budget plus 17%? Like the previous, last year? I know this before your time, this from Lancaster, Ms. Lancaster. So, so why we need, that's why my, my question is, why we, when we budget, we need to budget plus 17%? Since we already have $11 million in the bank, minus 2.1 today, always in the bank?
This is the slide that was part of the adopted budget. We do not budget 17% on top of that. If you notice here, your estimated ending fund balance is 16 million, right? This is your budget here. So out of that 16 million, we're seeing, we have, the 11.1 million is 17%. So that's already part of your budget.
If I can, I'm going to try and attempt this, because I know what you're talking about on the 17%. Yes. So it wasn't plus 17. I want to focus on revenues and expenditure line up there under operating, okay? At certain point, as we were developing the budget, the revenue numbers and expenditure numbers were fluctuating constantly. No, 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 this is about budgeting at that point. We had, we were asking council to approve certain revenues, and they did. So we projected the revenues that we would receive for that year. We were making adjustments to expenditures as well.
Last year, we went through three times, four times of a budget.
Yes.
Okay, and you always say, we have to this budget, we need to budget plus 17.
What we're saying is, as you, it wasn't budgeting an additional 17. It was saying, we needed to get 17% on that bottom yellow number.
What it is, is imagine we have $100 million.
Yes.
17 million is immediately gone, so you work on where you spend the rest.
So if you, and you have, and you said $100 million, and you have expenditures of 83 million, then you have your 17% reserve.
So my question is very simple. We, like, okay, our, okay, and the finance directors say that, okay, we, we have $11 million in the bank, minus today 2.1. Okay, so this is 70% less because today. So we always have those money in the bank. So why, okay, if this budget coming up this year, do we need a budget, okay? Everything we spend, and then you still add another 17% on top of the budget we're going to? And do we need to do that? That's my question. Because last year, we, we do the budget plus 17%. Let everything, so, okay, if we spend this money, then you have to add another 17%. So that's why we need to budget extra money, okay? And, and that's why I remember. So, so maybe you can explain to me. As long as your budget, exactly the budget, I'm, I'm okay.
What we're saying is, if you look at the operating, when you have your revenues and your expenditures, and your unassigned fund balance is 17% of that expenditure line item, that's when you have a balanced budget. If you're not dipping into your reserves or your fund balance. Okay, so if.
I got it, so I got, I got it. So you, you basically, you already put the reserve as a fund balance, and the 17% you're talking about, the, the, okay, the general fund you spent, then you still have less 70% okay, okay, in, in the bank.
So let's say at the beginning of the fiscal year, we had no revenues coming into the city, zero. You have 17% of a budget to work with. We project.
$11 million in the bank.
Of unassigned, okay? So you have that. What, and what we try to do is free up more of that money of the assigned, okay? So that's money that's owed to the city through redevelopment or other things. If that number goes down, that means the unassigned is going up. So that's another way to try and free up our budget, okay? Is to free up that assigned number that's behind me, okay? So what we, a balanced budget is trying to keep your, your revenues equal to your expenditures. In basic mathematics, okay? That's what we try to do. Unfortunately, we've been doing a lot of budget deficit spending here, where we've been dipping into the fund balance in order to help balance that budget. What we're trying to do moving forward is, whatever the revenues are that the city gets, let's say we project 65 million in general fund revenues next year, we're going to want to expend 65 million. But we also need to make sure that whatever that dollar amount is, the unassigned fund balance that's left over is equal to 17% of our total expenditures.
If, I, I have a question, if I may. Okay, so now, I, I'm kind of getting the hang of this a little bit more.
Good.
I didn't know it was much when I started up. So if we're going to drop down to, say, 15 point, I'm going to say 15.5% instead of 17. Now, when we're doing, do our revenues, expenditure, hours on balance, our budget, we don't have to add 17, and budget for 17%. We have to add it for that 2.5% to get back up to the 17%.
Correct. Whatever you're below 17%, you need to get back up to 17%.
Not the whole 17%, whatever you need to get back there.
Because there were.
Took me all night, but I understood it. Okay.
Everybody else feel comfortable?
I understand.
So remember, as expenditures go up, that means your unassigned balance needs to go up as well.
Over the last 10 years, have, have we always had a deficit? Or have we ever had a surplus?
I don't have that answer, but I.
We could get it later.
We can get that, but I think there may have been times where we did have a surplus, that we didn't dip into the fund balance.
Yeah, we could look at.
Yeah, I think, I'm sure there probably has been.
Look at trends, okay.
Are we comfortable for tonight? Oh, yeah, we, sorry, we want to receive and file?
Second.
All right. Item number 14. A request from Councilmember, or Councilwoman requesting the city council consideration of having the city staff survey other cities to determine what the services are provided after hours and on the weekends.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So how are we, how are we doing with this? Have we had a chance to look at what other cities are doing?
So no, we don't. So this is your, your attempt to get your colleagues to support that, and then we'll do that moving forward, if they support it.
All right, so.
Council requests for studies or investigations. More formal and professional that way.
Okay, are you, are you making that request?
I, I am making the request. I'd like for us to explore how we could make ourselves more available to, to the public for services.
I'm thinking that motion.
Okay.
I have a question. Okay, I know it's a long night already, but, okay. The question is, when they including the five, okay, business day for the resident can have service, including Friday? Unless, is that including you, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, that, thank you for bringing that up. That, that was my original request, to see if we could do that without causing any kind of scheduling problems, financial problems, being able to see if we could have services five days a week, or, or even more than that on weekends, using technology, without impacting ourselves negatively in any way.
Such like online service, people can apply. Such like online service, people can apply.
Online drop boxes, whatever clever solutions we can come up with.
Any other questions? We have a motion in second, roll call please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passes 5-0. And now we move to item number 16 from Mayor Pro Tem, requesting the city council consideration to change the frequency that the city audit committee meets another financial.
Actually, you skipped Ms. Lopez Viado's item.
Did I?
Yes, you did.
I did, I did. I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to do that. It's getting late. Anyway, request from Councilwoman Lopez to requesting the city council consideration rec staff to survey what measures other cities are taking to reduce panhandling in the city communities.
So this one is brought up by like a lot of the residents in private and public, and so I just wanted to see what other cities are doing or what, how can we enforce such, especially aggressive panhandling. I believe, I forgot what city has, where they have, not an ordinance or something, where a signage that tells them, or tells, especially areas where the exiting of the freeway or any of that, where it says, you know, don't, no, don't give money to them, you can give to these charitable organizations that can assist them. So it's, it's just a thing that was brought up by a few of the residents. Thank you.
A motion to, yes, to approve, or, I mean, mother may I, to continue.
If there's general consensus, then we'll move ahead.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, and the number 16, regarding, I want, okay, to have my colleague consent that we changing to the, okay, audit commission, okay, have them to meet at least once a month. And now, okay, not only that, okay, we have, just like city council, if they have a special meeting they want to call for due to the issue we have, they have two commissioners and they will call for the meeting. Okay, so this is my request to see if it's doable and to see the commissioner they okay with that. And another thing is I want to go with Mr. Greenwich regarding the, the audit, okay, the, okay, financial statement, which is by the state law, by, okay, put into the January, okay, 31st, that we should have all the financial statement, let me finish, okay, then, then, I'm done. Then another thing is this, okay, I think, and I agree with, okay, Councilwoman Lopez talking about, just beginning of the meeting, though, about can we expand this, including the finance slash the audit commission? So in that way, since we have a two city council member and plus the professional auditor, okay, and then with their profession, they really can help us look into the number, okay? So in that way, while they just, what thing happened, they do the audit, how about they can include into the finance so they can help us, okay? And with, with, okay, Councilman Castellano is a finance master degree, so hopefully find out, okay, they can, can, can go into, and Jessica too, okay? Councilwoman, okay, Shoemaker, okay, so I didn't forget you. So with all this, okay, professional can maybe into, okay, and, okay, much more, more tease, okay, and for this finance audit committee to help us to look into the number and hopefully that can give us the information and balance the budget. So this is my mother may I.
So what I'm hearing is, is because right now the city has in the municipal code, the definition of the audit committee and the duties, you're looking for us to change that more into, like, I think it was mentioned earlier, a finance committee or something along those lines. Okay, that's the first thing. So, yeah, but I do want to make sure I clarify, I know there was a speaker that gave information said that, you know, the audits due by January, that's incorrect. Well, the city attorney reviewed the code, spoke to that resident, and we all agree that that's incorrect information. So I just want to make sure the council is aware of that as well. Audits are not due in January.
So when is the due date? Myself, okay, we start March 31st, okay, my company, it's a finance company.
Correct.
We have to do by the first, the end of the year, okay, by 30, 90 days. So my, all the financial statement need to provide to my investors is March 31st. So I don't know, how about the city?
Right, so cities do them at a variety of times. They try and get them done in, in December, many in January, February, March. I was just, based on some of the comments heard at the public speaking, I reached out to a couple of my colleagues in, you know, Pomona, Claremont, and Pasadena. Neither one of those cities have adopted their CAFRs as of yet. They're looking to do that in the next 30 days. One of the challenges that cities are having right now is the new requirements or the updated requirements for OPEB and PARs liabilities the cities have. That's the retiring medical benefits. And so those are being done as well. Our CAFR is done other than that portion of it.
And regarding this, mother may I, I don't know this is feasible for the city. I don't want, again, I don't want to impose too much workload for you guys, but at the same time, we want to help out to balance the budget and to hopefully we can monitor we don't have last minutes of issue we have. So, so, so monthly, is that possible, can city can provide the expenditure and revenue and at least a balance sheet, okay? Like my company, we, every month, we have a balance sheet regarding the, the spending and this and that.
We will do whatever the council asks for. It's a lot of additional paperwork and work to have those done on a monthly basis, but.
My, my question, we could, the finance directors, okay, they already have a number compute into their system, so just provide the same thing they have, right, every month, in and out, in and out, just provide what they have, okay? You don't need to collect any data, you just, what, you, 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 in the finance department, you should have the number already with the income, you have, and the projection income, then you have a quote unquote, projection income would become by, for example, sales tax or the December 10th, okay, the property tax, then you can have a revenue coming in. So at least we can see, okay, what monthly, okay, and this and that. And that can help the audit, finance audit commission, okay, and they can hopefully get more information to, again, we try to help and not try to create more problem for.
No, I just think that once you have, if you're adding more meetings and more staff reports here on a monthly basis, that will cause, you know, some additional work. But saying that, I just want to find out, make sure we identify what you're looking for, because are you looking to get an update for each department on their spending as well? That's much more detailed and a lot more work. If you're just looking for revenues and expenditures coming in, that's easy enough to provide.
Yeah, I think so. My, my point of view, I don't know what the audit, okay, or finance department, okay, the audit, okay, commission, what they want. But for me, I hope, okay, just with the number we have, the monthly expenditure balance sheet, I don't think we need to have all the detail, unless, okay, the audit committee, they won't have the detail. But I don't know, for us, I think, I don't want to, again, impose too much of paperwork led, led due to the shooting or the staffing, so I want to make sure, but at least we can see what is going on. So we don't have potentially the 2.1, okay, or future deficit we're going to face.
Right, and I think that that'll be the goal of the future committee, because the audit committee is not really overseeing budget. Audit committee is to look at the end of the year financial report.
I know, but.
And be part of that process. They don't look month to month. On the new committee that you're being proposed, that will be proposed.
Yes, the mother may I is here, I want to, okay, propose to keep them become a finance, okay, slash audit committee so they can kind of oversee for this, for us, additional, audit to additional professional and plus, okay, our city council member, I think they can help out. But anyway, this is mother may I?
Yes.
Okay, and let, let, my colleague to see. So I want to move this to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's the last item.
So we do have closed session that we need to complete afterwards.
My question on that, do we have to complete that tonight or can we, we have to complete tonight?
We can continue it to another.
Unless you want to meet on another day this week, but we need.
That's what I mean, that's what I meant, another day this week. I say, can you, Wednesday night or Thursday night?
It depends on the conversation.
20 minutes?
Yeah.
20 minutes.
She has a mother may I.
Or, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, Jessica, I had, mother may.
Yeah, city council conference.
Well, I don't know what the rules are, but there were two that were mentioned tonight that I'm recalling now. But one is staffing for the finance department, because I think they'll find doing the monthly report is a lot easier when they clear their backlog. So temporary staffing to get that finished. And then also the code amendments regarding ADUs, making them more uniform. We had a whole discussion about it, I'm sure somebody took notes.
I have one day A to U as well.
Yeah, that was part of it.
All right, yes, that's her mother may I, that's it, we don't have to vote on that, she said, I don't have a mother may I.
Before you guys go, go, okay, we still have three minutes, okay? Today is the first day of the year of the pig, and I want to Lunar New Year, I want to wish everybody have a beautiful and magnificent, prosperous New Year's, okay? Gong Xi Fa Cai, okay?
Okay, we're adjourned.